Mary Robinson. I just returned from the executive session to receive a brief update on the tentative agreement with the Administrative Guild, SCIU Local 888. A report on this matter will be provided later in the meeting. I want to welcome everyone who is joining us tonight in person, on Boston City TV, and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone here in the chamber to please turn off the volume on your laptops or other devices so it does not interfere with the audio for tonight's meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the "May 14th Meeting" link. For those joining us in person, you can access the meeting documents by scanning the QR code that's posted by the doors. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. Live interpretation is available in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cape Verdean Creole, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and ASL. Zoom users can click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select a language. And I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. The committee will begin this evening by holding a public hearing on the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year 25-26. Under state law, each year, the committee must vote by June 1st whether the Boston Public Schools will admit non-residents. Do we have any speakers to testify on the school choice?
Chair, no.
Is there Ms. Parvex?
We don't have anyone.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Parvex. So we'll move on. We received a detailed presentation on the school choice program at the April 16th meeting. Tonight, we will be voting on this matter. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the hearing on the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year 2025 to 2026. We will then move into our regular meeting. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins? Mr. Carréz Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa? Ms. Palanca Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes. Thank you. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the tragic loss of two BPS students who recently passed away. Our hearts go out to their families, friends, classmates, and school communities during this incredibly difficult time. This is a profound loss for all of us. Superintendent, would you like to offer a few words?
Thank you, Chair. I think, as you echoed, these are devastating losses anytime we lose a student. It's just really important that in moments like this, we come together as a district, a community, a city. And the two students that we lost over the course of the last two weeks, Lenz Joseph, who was a five-year-old student at Up Door Chester Academy, and we lost him in the bus accident. And we also lost a 14-year-old who was an eighth-grade student at the Roosevelt Upper. And he was Marvin Cassius. And so for both of those students, we'll do the moment of silence. Anytime we have a student that's injured or loss of life, we work really directly with the families to try to support them as best we can. And I think for both of our students, that's been our focus, working with parents, siblings, any extended family, and the impact. And that includes trying to figure out how to support social, emotional, mental health, things that the family may need most immediately. That has been really, I think, the focus of the district. I also just want to reassure the committee that in the case of Lenz and our bus accident, that we immediately have started to work with TransDev, which is the contractor that does our hiring and training of our bus drivers, to ensure that our bus driver group has been appropriately trained and to make sure that they're supported because in any situation in which there's a loss of life of a student, that goes through the entire district. We've also worked very, very closely with both Up Academy, Dorchester, as well as the Roosevelt Upper, to just ensure that we are supporting as best we can that staff and the classmates of both students. And we will continue to do that to the best of our ability. I don't think, I think in all my time of being a school leader and teacher, the things that always sticks with me is when I lose a student. And I can pretty much remember all of them. And so unfortunately, I will add to that list, these two young men, promising young men, that were an essential part of our Boston Public Schools community. So if we could do a moment of silence, Chair, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to provide a brief update. The superintendent's evaluation process for the 2024-2025 school year is now underway, and there will be a presentation at the June 17th meeting, followed by a vote at the July 9th meeting. We will begin this meeting with the approval of minutes. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 16th, 2025 School Committee meeting. Is there a motion?
Some more.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chair. This past Tuesday, I had the pleasure of joining Mayor Wu and school leader Paul Neal, students and others, at the signing of a landmark project labor agreement with the Greater Boston Building Trades Unions and the North Atlantic State's Regional Council of Carpenters to create a new and expanded direct pathway for graduates of Madison Park Technical Vocational High School to good-paying, stable union jobs in the construction trades. The PLA, what we call the Project Labor Agreement, specifies that graduates of Madison Park will have direct entry into the building pathways, pre-apprenticeship program, a nonprofit organization founded by the Greater Boston Building Trades Unions, dedicated to the recruitment, retention, and advancement of underrepresented groups in the union building trades, particularly young women, people of color, and young adults. Madison Park offers six certified vocational programs aligned with the building trades: carpentry, electricity, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, what we call HVAC, metal fabrication, plumbing, and building and property maintenance. The top-performing half of each graduating class from each of these programs at Madison Park, which is up to 50 students per year, will have guaranteed admission into the building pathways, followed by admission to the registered apprenticeship program. Madison Park will be the only technical high school in Massachusetts to offer its graduates direct entry into apprenticeship programs at this scale. The agreement ensures a consistent supply of skilled union labor for major BPS capital projects. Throughout the district, we're creating pathways to college and career in areas like healthcare, education, and arts, and this agreement ensures a consistent supply of skilled union labor for major BPS capital projects. And again, with having more capital projects right now than in the last 40 years actively going, this is certainly going to be wonderful to have our own students be able to work on those projects. I know we have a busy meeting tonight, so I'm going to just jump right into some more bright spots before we get to the agenda items. During the school break, we had many students engaged in acceleration academies and academic enrichment activities. The Student Support Department also provided a number of exciting opportunities across the district during April break. More than 800 students participated in math-focused acceleration academies at 22 elementary and high schools across the city, the highest recorded daily enrollment with 743 students. 96 students from 21 BPS high schools embarked on a tour of 11 historically Black colleges and universities in the areas of Washington, D.C. and Virginia. Held in cooperation with the Mayor's Office of Blackmail Advancement and My Brothers Keepers, the tour also included a visit to the National Museum of African-American History and Culture and the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial, as well as nightly leadership and restorative circles. Students in grades 3 through 8 attended the Comic-Con Literacy and NBA Math Hoops Camp at the Dearborn STEM Academy. Students participated in creative writing projects, NBA math games, and superhero-themed activities which helped them develop reading strategies, creativity, math skills, and critical thinking. Student Support also hosted a fun volleyball camp for more than 120 K-8 students at the Reggie Lewis Center. The camp allowed students to learn new skills, build friendships, and develop a deeper appreciation for volleyball in a safe, inclusive environment. Although she cannot be here tonight as she's working hard on our regional soup interviews, I didn't want to let tonight go without sharing the wonderful news that Dr. Tanya Freedom Wisdom has been named as our new BPS Chief of Schools. You can see Tanya there. Dr. Tanya Freedom Wisdom has served BPS for more than 25 years, and she brings a wealth of experience to this role as a former head of school at both the John D. O'Brien, which is her alma mater, and Community Academy of Science and Health, or CASH. Most recently, Dr. Freeman Wisdom has served as the Region 7 Superintendent for Schools for the past three years, supporting a portfolio of secondary schools across the district. She's continuing to support the region's schools and will fully transition into her new role on July 1st. Search process for a new secondary region school soup to support Region 7 is underway, and at a future school committee, we will have Tanya come so that you can appropriately congratulate her. But I will say that I've had the opportunity to see Tanya grow from a school leader into a district leader, and it's been a pretty amazing and beautiful thing. So very, very excited for her leadership. I'm also thrilled to share that last month, Mayor Wu announced that BPS librarian, poet, editor, and educator, Emmanuel Opang Ibaugh, will serve as Boston's next poet laureate starting in July of 2025. A beloved member of the BPS community, Emmanuel grew up in Boston and works at the Joseph Lee School in Dorchester, where they nurture the creativity, curiosity, and love of words with students every day. I'm so proud to see an educator in this role. Yesterday, I attended in this room the 18th Annual BPS Wellness Summit here in the School Committee Chamber, which brings district and community stakeholders together to share resources, success stories, and inspire one another to create safe, healthy, and sustaining learning environments. Attendees and panelists will share ways BPS is making a difference together to improve health, well-being, and academic success. A highlight of the summit was a special awards ceremony to honor schools' excellence in school wellness. 21 BPS students traveled to NASA recently for a life-changing trip that included exploring the Kennedy Space Center, meeting NASA engineers and astronauts, engaging in hands-on STEM experiences at Wonder Works, and participating in a behind-the-scenes engineering class at Universal Studios. Students represented 11 BPS schools, including three students from the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. This visit affirmed our commitment to access inclusion and representation. This was the second annual trip planned as part of the Gathering, a young men's mentoring program in the Office of Teaching and Learning. Members of the Gathering, Class of 2025, have been accepted to Stanford, MIT, Denison, Boston University, and Wentworth Institute of Technology. Congratulations to all those that participated. Last week, we celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week and Principal Appreciation Day on May 1st. We honored more than 6,000 district educators who are dedicated to providing a supportive and safe learning environment for every student, every day. My years in the classroom, some of the best in my career, I think I've shared that, but they were also some of my hardest. Teachers' work is truly never fully done, as they are always striving to improve on their practice by planning, assessing, reflecting, when they enter the classroom each day. We're grateful for the hard work of all of our teachers, whether they're a veteran teacher or just starting out, and I'm proud to call them my colleagues and work alongside them every day. On Wednesday, May 7th, we also honored BPS healthcare professionals on National School Nurse Day during the National School Nurses Week for their commitment to keeping our schools and students healthy and ready to learn. Our school nurses gathered in the courtyard of Boston Latin Academy for a special celebration, where they presented Boston Green Academy School Nurse, Marta Bausamer, with the Outstanding Contribution Award for her unwavering advocacy for LGBTQ+ students and her innovative emotional wellness program, Art Love. And Mary Lou Vivian Morris from BPS Health Services was honored with the GOAT Award for her leadership in developing chronic care condition guides and templates that are strengthening nursing practice across our district. Last night, four BPS educators were honored by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, for their hard work and dedication to supporting our students. Luisa Sparrow, Perry K-8 School Teacher and 2025 Massachusetts Teacher of the Year; Maya Smith, Fenway High School Associate Head of School and 2025 Massachusetts Assistant Principal of the Year; Suhailey Santos, Curly K-8 School Counselor and the 2025 Massachusetts School Counselor of the Year; and Emily Silas, English High Schools History Teacher and finalist for Massachusetts History Teacher of the Year. I would say we did a pretty clean sweep on Educators of the Year when it came to the awards. Congratulations to all of you for being recognized as the best educators in the state and choosing to work here in BPS. Earlier this month, students in the Office of Specialized Services Strive Program dawned their best attire and spent the afternoon at Dorchester's Florian Hall, dancing, socializing, and enjoying lunch at the BPS Annual Spring Fling. Held by the BPS Strive Department for more than 20 years, the Spring Fling is one of the most joyful events on the BPS calendar. And unfortunately, I was home with COVID, but this is literally one of my favorite events. It's just a blast. Prom season is here, and to help our students find the perfect look, the Office of Family and Community Advancement held its first prom drive last month and collected formal clothing, items, and accessories for our students. Organizers initially collaborated with three schools but ended up serving 15 and a total of 152 BPS students. From sparkly gowns to bow ties, students were invited to select what they needed for their big night at a special event held here at Bowling, which included the help of volunteer personal shoppers, fittings, a DJ, raffles, and food. Thank you to the organizers and all who donated to help out. And finally, I'm so excited to talk about the Aspen Challenge. Students from the Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers, Excel High School, and Margarita Muniz Academy are the grand prize winners for the 2025 Aspen Challenge. Boston, if you remember right, this is a two-year national education program that challenges high school students to design solutions to social justice issues. Students from 17 BPS high schools spent 10 weeks developing their ideas to combat pressing problems including gun violence, homelessness, mental health issues from social media, green space needs, et cetera. Those ideas were presented to a panel of judges composed of community leaders, educators, and experts, and the winning teams are headed to the Annual Aspen Ideas Festival in Colorado next month. I truthfully was amazed at the quality of the presentations, and we did Zoom the next day to announce the winners. And I can just say, even the teams that did not win, they just were so good at supporting their peers and giving them shout-outs and congratulating them. You could literally feel the just sense of support and spirit and positivity that existed. And thank you to Chair Robinson as well for attending the Aspen Challenge, both kickoff and the competition. I think it was fair to say it was one of our biggest bright spots in BPS. So Chair, that's my soup's report. Pass back to you.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee, and I'd like to remind my colleagues about our agreed-upon norm that we each have five minutes per round, and hopefully this evening, given our schedule, that we're going to try to do everything in single rounds. So there will be, and we will have five minutes per member and not including district response. And when there's one minute remaining, I'll have Ms. Parvex give you a reminder. She'll also notify you when your time is concluded. As I said, given that we have a packed agenda this evening, I'll ask all speakers to be mindful of the time and committee members to keep their questions and comments as concise as possible. I'll remind us all of this throughout the evening, so I'd like to remind BPS staff to keep your responses brief, and I'll be calling on each member for only one round of questions while we are mindful of time. I'll ask everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you. So with that, I'll now open it up for questions. You can't speak. I mean...
I have a question. It's not totally on topic, but I am curious as where, and it's a continued topic that Dr. Alkins has also brought up. How are we sort of thinking through the implications of some of the federal issues on our budget? And are there any changes? It feels so newsy that it almost feels like we have to talk about it here, sort of given the noise that's creating.
Yeah, so we have definitely had a few federal grants that have been either frozen or taken back. One around our bilingual teacher pipeline grant. There's another that is a large mental health grant that is with a partner university for our school psychs. And then there's been some smaller teacher professional development ones. We continue to monitor this really closely, and there's been a number of legal challenges. And pretty much everything we have lost is tied up in a legal challenge. So I think, you know, one of the biggest ones happened early on, and it was in expenditure of Estero Grants that had been approved beyond the deadline. We had actually spent most of all the money, but we had a small amount that had been pre-approved, and to find out that that was being taken back was devastating because it had been allocated to things. So that was the initial legal challenge to that was positive. And so we're now trying to work to understand what that means for us in terms of the release of that funding. I think this is a really changing landscape. Every day, you have to do due diligence, but I will say that we have a team between our Finance and Budget Office and Grants, we'll Blair his hair, you'll hear from Blair later, but between that office and our Legal Office and our Civil Rights Office, and they're just doing incredible work, keeping up to date on the various legal challenges that are happening across states, nationally, and then within Massachusetts. And we've been blessed to be in a state where RAG is being very proactive and really, really challenging a lot at the state level.
Is it fair to say to educators and then to parents, like, in the coming academic year, they won't feel the impact of the cuts?
Well, as of right now, I think the two grants that we're most concerned about are the bilingual pipeline grant, where it will, we will have to scale back what we had intended to do. And I think we all are clear that one of the, you know, one of the things that we are trying to work on is increasing the amount of our bilingual staff across the district at all positions. I think the other one is the mental health grant. It's part of our comprehensive mental health package, and that is one that I am nervous about because it has to do with preclinicians and their time in the schools. So that is one that we're trying to do as much due diligence on right now to figure out what the legal challenge will be.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I've been here a lot in the last two weeks to a number of events and have been both impressed and proud of the work that so many different members of our staff and the kids are doing. The Aspen Challenge would have blown you all away. We spent most of that day crying because of the poignant and wonderfully articulated presentations that all of the students made from 17 different schools. And I'm hoping that there will be a way before the end of this year that we can have here at least a snippet of those presentations. They made six-minute presentations, six times 17 would keep us here for a while. But I know that we're going to hear from the folks that are the finalists. But these are the things we never read about in the newspaper, about the incredible work of our young people. I spent an afternoon, and I know we will be hearing more of it soon, about the work that BSAC has done over this past year, and they did their showcase last week. That was wonderful. I was here yesterday morning for the, just for the panel of three school leaders and three students around our wellness work and the things that they talked about. There are amazing things going on in our schools that we often don't hear about, and I'm hoping that there will be ways that we can celebrate and hear, particularly first person hear, from our students with regard to how they think about the education they're getting, how they are articulating what they need better, and working together with educators and school leaders to improve their own outcomes. And we need to find ways of acknowledging and celebrating that for what it is.
Yeah, I'll be talking about BSAC when I do the introduction, but it was pretty amazing. And what I also really appreciated about it was the way that the older students in BSAC, you know, really cheered on the middle school team that was there because they were, you know, understandably nervous, as we would all be. And I think, you know, the Sarah Greenwood kids showed up and ready to go, and I think the older kids really, you know, cheered them on as we would hope. And I think you'll hear a bit about some of the deep work that BSAC has done around the cell phone policy. Perfect example where student experience translated into advocacy, translated into recommendation. So we'll talk about that in a bit.
Madam Chair, thank you. I apologize for not speaking up earlier. It did dawn on me that since we had our last meeting, Superintendent Principal for a Day, your principal partners, actually happened. You talked about the last one, it was about to happen, and this was a day that, what, close to '85?
'94.
'94, roughly. Business leaders, nonprofit leaders, community leaders spent time working with principals for a day. I was at the Perry School myself and then got together for lunch afterwards. And it was, it's great thanks to the Greater Boston Chamber of Commerce and Jim Rooney, who worked with you to make it happen, and for Bank of America for supporting it. But the overwhelming consensus as it went around the room after lunch afterwards in a bit of a roundtable discussion was, you know, people who are leading businesses and nonprofits and community organizations in our city saying, wow, I can't believe there're good things going on. Every school that people were at, they were talking about the good things that were going on the schools, and they said, we never read this in the media, right? And they were applauding the good work, and I think many people realize it would be, the most challenging role is to be a school leader, because we demand a lot from them, and we hold them to very high expectations. So deep appreciation for their role, but it was very helpful, and hopefully, a lot of partnerships for our schools are going to come out of this, and more of the business community is going to be supporting our schools.
Yeah, I think you're right, and thank you for participating. You know, I think it's, I think the more that we can get folks into our schools, the more that they experience and see firsthand, like, how amazing our kids are and our staff, and they just experience it and see it, and it can combat whatever is being publicized elsewhere in a different way. So I think that that was, because I agree with you, I think it was very palpable in that room, that every, and we kind of did a roundabout where we had different people talking, kind of going around, and everybody gave that testimony. And then there were lots of emails that came in afterwards that I was CC'd on. that I was CC'd on that, you know, went to the school leader to just deeply thank them for that opportunity and then to just really congratulate them for their work. And that's what we have to do, right? That's what we used to do in BPS was we were an open district and we celebrate on a regular basis what we do well and work hard on the things that we know we need to improve. And that's the district that we're moving back toward.
And now entertainment, motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the superintendent's report is approved. Now, I'm delighted to welcome Omar Ishmael, a student representative, to provide a brief update on the Boston Student Advisory Council. And before Mr. Ishmael starts, I want to invite the superintendent to give introductory remarks.
Great. So thank you, Chair. So I just, I just want to start by thanking Member Ishmael for your leadership on the council this year, for participating in BSAC. I don't know how you juggle everything, but those are two big commitments. So thank you. It's been, it's been great to have your voice here. You know, I, I also want to thank the student leaders for BSAC, for making the commitment to make BPS better. We have 46 active BSAC members representing 24 high schools. And to just give you a sense, these numbers represent an increase of 13 schools from last year and four additional members. And why that's significant is because we talked about how post-pandemic, Denise and Twando had to kind of rebuild this and call students back to it because the pandemic kind of forced everybody out. And so I think it's just been a lot of just intentional hard work that was evident in the, in the showcase. The energy in the room was contagious the day of the showcase. There was poetry and spoken word by Fenway in their dance troupe. There was student speakers and passion projects. There was, one of the students, Ophelia, did a beautiful recitation of a poem. There was, there was just, there was storytelling by another student from Benca. It just, you left there energized to see what our young people are about. And also Chair Robinson, for you, you go to so many different events and plug into our young people. And I know that it meant a lot to the students and to BSAC leadership that you were there. I think sometimes, and I said this in my remarks to the students, people, adults, don't realize how much our young people juggle. And particularly at the high school level, where they're juggling often not just homework and schoolwork, but they're juggling jobs. And in some cases, those jobs are actually supporting families. And they're in transportation where they have to get across the city using public transportation, which can take a lot of time. And they're often caretakers for family members. They have real adult responsibilities. And yet with all of that, the members of BSAC find a way to show up to the work and to take on the real kind of social impact, challenges and questions that we know make a difference to kids. So I just can't thank the, you know, the membership's enough. I, I think Denise and Twando, like, thank you so much for your work on it and leading it. It's definitely been noticed how it's grown. And it feels really good to see it back, getting back to where it was. So thank you both. So with that, Chair, I'll turn it over so we can proceed.
Hello, my name is Angel DePina Pereira. I'm the current social media chair for BSAC and I'm a senior at the John D. O'Brien. I've been here with BSAC for the last three years and I'm currently filling in for BSAC's president. It's Ruffey Ham who could not join us here today at this time. And I'll let my co-presenters introduce themselves.
Hello. As you know, my, my name is Omar Ishmael. I've had the honor of serving as the student representative in the school committee. And I'm a senior at the O'Brien and I've been at BSAC for two years now.
Hi, my name is Said Said. I'm a junior at Boston Line School. I've been at BSAC for two years and I'm the president of Brothers at BSAC. So this is our second year hosting the BSAC showcase as a way to display all of our hard work as well as a support and create space for other students to showcase their leadership. A main focus of the showcase are the passion projects, which are independent projects that BSAC students work on to address school-based issues that they want to address. These projects are student-generated and are based on what they would like to see improved in their schools or to spread awareness about an issue. The theme of the showcase is beyond the classroom, showcasing BPS's talent. So we wanted to bring in students who are leaders in their own spaces. We invited the Sarah Greenwood Student Government to share and show that students are invested in leadership in their school communities. We had some amazing student performances of poetry and dance. We also had some great food and got to support various student clubs during the event. We also presented an update on our yonder pouch and cell phone policy, which is still ongoing, and Angel will share more about that next.
BPS has not had an updated cell phone policy since 2005. And now it's time for the district to support school communities with deciding what cell phone policy is best. Back in December, we started our campaign revolving around yonder pouches, which has now evolved into a greater issue of cell phone policy. We had a petition back in January, which got over 1,000 student signatures. And we hosted a very informative town hall that featured students, school leaders and teachers in order to get all perspectives in order to discuss issues of cell phones, social media, and the need for some decisions to be made about phones. We also took a trip to the Attorney General's Office to meet with them to talk about the Study Act, which would call for there to be a ban on cell phones from bell to bell. We wanted to understand more about the Study Act bill, learn about their lawsuits with social media campaigns, and ensure that BPS students' perspectives were being honored and understood while putting forth this legislation. We will continue to work closely together with the Attorney General's Office as they build out their bill and while BPS is still working on their district policy. We are also happy to announce that through the advocacy of students within BSAC and Socia Latina, and with the new support of Superintendent Skipper, the district will create a working group focused on exploring new cell phone policy. Thank you Superintendent Skipper.
I'll talk about the, what we've done with community and middle school engagement. It's crucial for BPS students to be connected to their communities and to see Boston as our classroom. We have made it a priority this school year to get connected with middle schools that have student leadership programs or councils. This school year, we, this year, we visited the Hurley School, the Sarah Greenwood, the Higgins and Lewis, and are hoping to become a mentor for them and showing young leaders that they have the ability to be in all spaces and that the ability to be in all spaces was a tremendous learning experience. We've connected with many different youth-driven organizations across the city to build better connections across all of the youth leaders in Boston. Through our exchanges, visits, visits and workshops, we have reinforced the connection between leadership and youth-serving organizations. This has been exciting work because there are so many amazing youth leaders and organizations across the city that give us different perspectives about the challenges they are facing. Connecting with Sparkshare, a design-thinking organization that helps young people identify issues and prototype solutions to them was super productive of BSAC this year. Both Sabeda, both Sabeda and Neil quickly became part of the BSAC family, supporting us with the Yonder Pouch campaign and supporting passion projects through empathy mapping, stakeholder mapping, and much more. We would like to thank them for their time and commitment to our work. I'll pass it on to Angel.
Yeah, now we wanted to take a quick moment to share our thoughts and reflect within our time at BSAC. All of us have been at BSAC for several years and would like to take a moment to share our reflections on the time we spent here. For me, BSAC has taught me the different qualities of being a leader and the different phases of leadership and how to be a leader within my community. I've grown exponentially in my leadership and public speaking skills, something I did not believe I would be able to accomplish when I first started here. I now have been able to become the change I want to see in my community and start the process of making solutions to the issues I see in my daily life at school.
Before BSAC, I'd like, before BSAC, I never could have imagined myself doing the things I do now, talking in front of a crowd of people in the school committee room, reaching out to people and proposing my ideas to the public. This was just unimaginable. How could I, a person who would sometimes hesitate in raising his hand in school to answer a question, ever be a voice, not only for myself, but for students in Boston as well? BSAC brings leadership aspects out of its, out of all of its members. It gives them opportunities. It gives them a platform. And most importantly, it gives, it provides a community that will support them and celebrate them no matter what. A community that I can confidently call a family to me. BSAC has given so much to me. And I'm confident that they will keep on changing lives and the future ahead. Any questions?
So within your presentation, you talk about the cell phone policy, the yonder pouch policy and the mental health. Did you all, may or may, you may or may not have asked this, but around any particular types of investments that you'd like to see from the budget go towards certain things?
During the year, we were able to connect with Mr. David Bloom about talk to help students discuss how they can be involved in the funding, in the budgeting process. And it, hmm, I think some things that I think I heard during the meeting where people want to see more investments into field trips, having more opportunities of those, of those. And do you guys have, have you guys heard anything from that meeting? I think we've also heard about renovating school, renovate, investing warranty, renovating school buildings. People go to, people complain about like the conditions of their school. And we know that the environment is direct, has a direct correlation with how people enjoy their time at school and maybe even their performance. So I guess those are two, two things that we'd like to see more investment in.
School lunch always makes the list, too.
It, it did.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would like to say to you that I feel very proud of what you're doing. And I would like to invite you to continue to advocate for your rights. This is going to help you build strength and resilience and it's going to help you understand that even though when you cannot change some things, you can improve them. So keep going. Congratulations. And Omar, all of your questions were wonderful, all the questions you were asking. So keep going, guys.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Ms. Polonka Garcia. And I know that we'll keep on having your support in the future.
Sorry, I just had another question. Particularly with influxes of students that will be coming into our district, particularly at, I'm thinking the high school level, but at all levels. Has BSAC thought about any activities that you all might do for welcoming our new students into BPS?
So we, hey, guys. So we've been working very closely with the off, oh, sorry.
We've been working very closely with the Office of Multilingual, and oh my gosh, OM, I know the acronym. I don't know all the words. Thank you, OM. We've been working very closely with them. Our students have participated in the Community IFtar event. They were pinned at the D-LAC conference. We will be going to the K-Verdian celebration as well. And so we've been very interconnected with that department this school year, which has been a great partnership. We will continue to do that. Also, in the fall, or maybe it was last year, there was an influx of students who, who came in from Haiti. And we had all of our Haitian-speaking BSAC members there to welcome them, to connect with them. So we will absolutely continue to do that work and make sure that it's accessible, whether it's translation, interpretation, whatever we need to ensure that our students can be a part of BSAC.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So thank you to the three for your presentation and for the whole group that works on this. I've, I've seen a few of these over the years and I have to compliment you on the creativity. So not only the topics that you tackled this year, the cell phone policy, the reaching out to middle schools, school councils, but even the senior reflections at the end were very, very thoughtful. And I really appreciated it. I do look forward to BSAC's specific recommendations around the cell phone policy because having the student input, I mean, that's a real meaty topic that, M-E-A-T, right, meaty, that, that we do need the input and hear directly from student voice on this. I'm also going to encourage your peers who will be following on to next year. Another topic to think about that the district may need to tackle at some point is a policy around the use of AI. And hearing, hearing student voice on that is going to be critical as well. And so that may be something for you to, for your, for your colleagues who are following on after you next year to also tackle. So congratulations for going after some big issues such as this. And Mr. Ishmael, in particular, since you have been sitting here, your voice has been heard. And thank you for advocating on behalf of all your peers across the whole district so wonderfully all year long. So thank you all.
Just want to say again, thank you to all of you who have enjoyed meeting with you this year. Really was happy to be able to come to the showcase and look forward to more great things in the future. And many thanks to your staff who stand beside you and behind you and encourage you every day. We really appreciate all the work that you have done and continue to do with our young people. So thank you all.
I have, I have one quick question to get onto the record for Deputy DePina to hear. So Director Rory, I think you know that I, I love the middle school involvement because it's building capacity toward high school. What, what does BSAC need in order to have more middle school outreach, to get more Sarah Greenwood, you know, like students in middle schools involved?
Sorry, Sam. I love you. We definitely could use a, a middle school coordinator, you know, somebody whose role it is to connect with, directly with our middle schools, to maybe provide some program. I mean, he and I have, have big dreams and we're probably going to make it happen one way or the other. But we would like to find some ways to get into middle school classrooms because we know after school is difficult. But maybe we can work within, whether it be a student government time or elective time to come in, workshop with the young people and build those relationships. We're working on a middle school election toolkit as well. So we will have that for the fall. And yeah, I mean, the middle schoolers are amazing. We would love to have a middle school coordinator whose job it is to just work solely with our, our young people and bring them into the BSAC family and fold.
Wonderful. I can tell Deputy, I can tell you Deputy DePina is making notes down there. I can see him. It's great. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. Well, thank you all. Our next two reports will be presented now and then brought forward for a vote later during the action item portion of the meeting. Our first report is the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and the Administrative Guild SEIU Local 888. First, I want to invite the superintendent to give introductory remarks.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chair. So, as we discussed in executive session earlier this evening, we're asking the school committee for approval for the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the committee and the Administrative Guild SEIU Local 888. The Guild voted to ratify the tentative agreement on April 17th. This agreement presents an increase of nearly $3 million over three years, which would cover wage increases for the Guild's 275 members. This agreement is also in keeping with the recently passed contract with the Boston Teachers Union that gives our lowest wage workers the largest increases. Thanks to BPS Director of Labor Relations Jeremiah Hassan and Senior Labor Council Helen Anderson, certainly BPS is working and continues to work hard to establish a predictable cycle so that we are negotiating and settling our contracts before they expire. We have also staggered the contracts to avoid creating a backlog and avoidable delays. This effort is out of respect for our workforce and bargaining units. We believe our employees should not have to wait to receive what they deserve. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Anderson for a short presentation.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, committee members. My name is Helen Anderson, and before I jump into it, I just wanna also thank a couple of members of the negotiating team for BPS, which is Dacia Campbell in our Division of Schools and Hannah Hall in our Office of Human Resources, as well as our Guild partners, the local president Sarah McAdams, Vice President Levon James, and their negotiating team included Lisa Murphy. So, the Guild represents approximately 275 members who serve BPS students in both school secretary positions as well as technical positions in central office and in our schools. The parties reached a tentative agreement on April 11th. The Guild voted to ratify on April 17th, and this contract would extend our current collective bargaining agreement through August 31st, 2027. The financial package is as follows for a three-year cost of just shy of $3 million. Year one is $250 as a flat rate increase plus a 2% COLA. Year two, $900 plus a 2% COLA, and year three is $850 plus a 2% COLA. Our operational reforms and recommendations include increasing opportunities for internal and external professional development, launching a mentorship program for our tenured school secretaries to guide new school secretaries, revising language to expand the window for posting and hiring for Guild positions over the summer, expanding the pool of candidates by opening grade 23 positions and below to internal and external candidates, and updating our leave and holiday benefits within the Guild to bring them on parity to other unions. So, our recommendation is to vote in favor of the tentative agreement and the supplemental appropriation request for fiscal year 25 of $394,901, fiscal year 26 of $977,749. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, open it up to any questions. I think we look forward to taking our vote later in the meeting. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Our next report is on school trust expenditures. I'd like to invite the superintendent to offer opening remarks.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. The city of Boston and the BPS are the beneficiaries of 40 school trust funds. Income generated by these trust funds are spent on a specific purpose that's been set by the donor. The funds cannot be expended for any other purpose. These trusts were established as far back as the 17th century and amount to more than $79,555 annually. The process for accessing these funds has become more complex over time. As a result, the funds are not currently benefiting our students as they were originally intended. We're asking the school committee to vote on this proposal later in the meeting in order to ensure that the funds will be available to this year's graduates. Deputy Chief Financial Officer Blair Dawkins is here to present recommendations for streamlining the process. Blair is joined by Margaret Dyson, who's the Director of Trust for the city of Boston. Turn it over to you both of you.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. This proposal has been a collaborative effort between City Treasury as well as BPS Finance. And before we get started, I'd like to thank Margaret Dyson as the initiator of this change and my co-presenter, as well as Shandell Hughes, Scott Finn, and Rebecca Granger from the city of Boston, and then Massey Pimentel, Janita Johnson, and Bet Sally Etcheverria from BPS Finance.
So, as the superintendent said, the trust funds were left to benefit particular schools and particular students, usually in someone's will, and they were set up for a specific purpose and the income can only be spent on this purpose. I think you put it so beautifully earlier. There are things you can't change, but you can improve, and I think that that's what we've been working together to do.
So, what is the school committee's role in the school trusts and student awards process? School committee serves as the Board of Trustees for school trusts, and that means that school committee is the governing body for the existing funds. It also means that school committee approval is required to establish any new trusts. We're here now because, as the superintendent mentioned, the process for schools to access these funds has become increasingly complicated. Funds sit in City Treasury and schools need to go through multiple steps in order to access these funds to provide scholarships and awards for students, as well as to purchase supplies, books, and library services. And so, only 55% of trusts have been accessed in the last decade and so we've been working with the superintendent in order to implement a series of changes that would improve our process to ensure schools can access these funds. Our next steps would be a vote later this evening to allow us to load funds into school budgets. This would be the first step to ensure improved access to trust funds. There will also be a vote on June 17th at that school committee meeting. This would provide the superintendent with the authority to approve trust payments. Following that, BPS Finance would update all of the superintendent circulars to ensure that the most up-to-date information is included for schools to access trusts. We'd then communicate that change to all impacted schools, and then we'd provide direct support to those schools to ensure they could access the funds they're eligible for. Thank you. We look forward to your vote.
Any other questions?
Couple of questions. I think it's, I think the presentation is clear what we're, what we're supposed to do. I guess one question is around how much communication is done between BPS, City Treasury, and families to know that there are trusts like this? Where, and, and this is a naive question because I don't know how it gets done, but it seems that they're set up by either individual donors to go towards particular, all types of random awards that schools do give out. So, do families know that this exists? Do families know that, I don't know if they can donate into these trusts? I don't, this is just a random, a question. Do they know?
I can take the first part if you wanna do the second about adding to the trust. So, our process would include a communication strategy. We want to ensure that schools know exactly how their trusts work, how to access those funds, and are able to share that information with their families and students. We've run, one of the other complications with folks gaining access to their trusts is turnover at the schools as well as central office. And so, we want to ensure that the information is accessible and that as many people know about it as possible.
What's the process for trusts that were written for specific schools that no longer exist?
So, if I can take that one, unfortunately, we have to go to court to, for the Latin school crowd, sigh, pray, to, to come up with a use for them that's as close as possible to the original intended use. We have a couple of like that. We have one for JP High School. And so, we need to work with our city attorneys to go to court to get these updated.
And we'd come back after that time because this vote only covers the schools where we know exactly where those funds should go.
I think to Dr. Elkin's question, I think what happens is school leadership changes over, guidance changes over, and so they're generally the ones that distribute scholarships and award prizes. And so, if that continuation isn't there, you can literally have it just sit. I know like at Tech Boston, there's a large scholarship that's given out annually. It doesn't reside here, resides in a, in actually Boston Foundation. But that's an example where legacy, you have to pass that information down, right? So, these are sometimes so old that there's been such changeover that they've fallen off of the radar. And so, this would be an opportunity to work directly with the school leaders and ensure that annually they're given that information to make sure that somebody is getting that award.
And in terms of your other question about donating, in general, they can't donate to a trust that was left in someone's will because that has a limited specific purpose. But there are trusts that have been created recently. We, I believe, had the school committee vote to accept a trust just this past year where someone had left some funds in their will for the benefit of one of the schools. There are a lot more methods than there were in the 1700s to donate, and so, a lot of these are older.
Yeah, I have, I have a number of short questions, as a matter of fact. Altogether, how many, how many trusts are there, you know, that, that you are managing?
350.
I'm sorry?
350.
And the general amount annually is about 75,000?
Oh, that's, oh, I'm so, 40 for the schools. For the schools alone, we have about 40. And it's generating roughly 79,000. It's about 5% of the value of the investments.
I see. Out of, out of all that, first, which category, say, books, mental health issue, bilingual education, maybe? What categories amount to the, 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 the most number of trusts there?
It splits pretty evenly between those that benefit students directly, either through an award or a scholarship, and those that benefit a school for purchase of books for small children, other sorts of uses. But it's about half and half benefiting individual students and benefiting schools.
So, if we, I presume that we're gonna vote on whether we're gonna, as a board of trustees, will transfer the, the authority to the superintendent to, to use the money. Is there any restriction on how, aside from the specific purpose of, of, of the trust? Is any other legal restriction that would be imposed on her?
As long as we're consistent with the purpose of the trust, that's our legal obligation.
Okay. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
In order to be able to understand the proposal, I would like to volunteer a practical example. For example, let's say Person X decides to put in his or her will $50,000 to benefits these students, that is specific school. I do understand very well that this has to go to court, there has to be a trust, and it is a judicial process that has to take place. I do understand that very well. So, it is important in order to speed up the process, to make it faster and more efficient, there should be a way that we could actually approve this through the superintendent so the superintendent could enable a process to happen faster than that in order to be able to cut any bureaucratic process that could be on the way. Is that a possibility?
So, one of the things that the library trusts do, which might be a good model, is that they vote annually to empower their leadership to both accept gifts and to distribute gifts consistent with the purpose of the trust. And so, this allows on an annual basis for us to provide information to, I'm going to refer to you as the board, because, the board, and for you to then empower the superintendent to act. If that's a model that would be of interest, I'm happy to provide the language of that vote and we could get into an annual rhythm of doing that and increasing efficiency.
So, I'd like to make emphasis this particular part that says it requires to update the superintendent, anything that has to do with the school trusts and anything that is school-related, to be able to update any notice regarding that from the superintendent. That's what I'm reading from here. So, therefore, if there is a way that we can approve or enable the superintendent to do this, there will be a process that is more transparent and it is more transparent in terms of the financial implications of, of that particular process. If we have the ability to empower or enable this through the superintendent. Correct? Is that the case?
I think that that is a very doable and sensible suggestion, and I look forward to working with Blair and others to make it happen.
Right. And I would also just suggest that we make, we codify it from a practice standpoint that annually, it's reported out in the grants to the school committee what that distribution was. Just so that annually, the school committee is seeing how those dollars are being spent.
Yeah. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Just one more short question, a naive question anyway. All these trusts are irrevocable, I guess?
Yes.
It is.
I'm a little bit confused. I know some of the, some of these trusts are actively being accessed now, correct? And then are, are some others where the schools have changed, et cetera, are not And then are some others where the schools have changed, etc., are not being accessed?
So, the way that we used to do it was very passive on our part. We sort of said, this is what's available and waited for people to come to us. What we would like to do is work together to take on some more responsibility, to reach out to schools and to work directly with BPS to ensure that that information is available, even if there have been staffing changes on our side. There've been a lot of staffing changes on our side. And if there are staffing changes in BPS.
Yeah, I think that loading into the school's budget is a critical piece because then the dollars are seen and the principals will know this is something that we do annually.
And they'll know how to spend it.
You know, the Franklin Medal is the one thing that we know consistently is given. Yeah, but there is one prize on here that I received when I was in the sixth grade, five dollars. The Samuel David Gross Award that was given to a fourth, fifth, and sixth grader in each of the Roxbury schools for courtesy. But I got it in the system. Now it's twenty-five dollars, which is great.
Another reason we would love to go to court to update some of these numbers.
Right, yeah, it was like, yeah. Thank you. Alright, so we look forward to taking action on this later in the evening.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Your work on this.
So, I guess we'll now move on to public comment. Yes, we now move on to general public comment.
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for individuals to address the school committee on school-related issues. Questions on specific school matters are referred to the superintendent. Questions on policy matters may be discussed by the committee later. The meeting will feature two public comment peers with the first comment period limited to one hour. After one hour, anyone who hasn't testified will have the opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. We have twenty-nine speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I would remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. Please feel free to email your comments for distribution to the committee. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from speakers' allotted time. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please note the comments of any public speaker do not represent the Boston Public Schools or the Boston School Committee. Please state your name, affiliation, and where you live before you begin. If you're on Zoom, please sign in using the name you registered with for public comment and be ready to unmute and turn on your camera when it's your turn to speak. Please raise your virtual hand when I call your name. To support the interpretation, please speak slowly and clearly. The first in-person speakers are Charity Rounds, Abraham Sarah, Laura Lara Soto, and Diabelis Infante. Charity Rounds? Abraham Sarah? Laura Lara Soto? Laura Lara Soto will need a Spanish interpreter.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Laura Lara Soto y soy residente de Roxbury.
My name is Laura Lara Soto, I reside in Roxbury.
Todos ustedes es sociedad latina, una organización de desarrollo juvenil ubicada en Roxbury.
I'm here on behalf of Sociedad Latina, it is a youth association and they are located in Roxbury. I'm here on behalf of Sociedad Latina.
Como líder juvenil en su equipo de organización comunitaria juvenil.
I am a youth leader and I am in that particular position as a leader, as a youth leader.
En el pasado me enfrentaba muchas dificultades en clase porque como no me sentía abrumada o no entendía algo, mi reacción inmediata era tomar mi teléfono y desconectarme de mi entorno.
So, in the past, I felt a little bit overwhelmed because of the difficulties that were showing in class. I felt a little overwhelmed when I was not able to understand something. My reaction, my immediate reaction was to take a look at my phone when I was feeling that way and disconnected from the surroundings.
Lo que afectaba a mí es notas y complicaba mi desempeño al trabajar en grupo. Era un círculo vicioso que perjudicaba tanto mi aprendizaje como mi confianza.
So, this was significantly impacting my grades and it was not enabling my good performance in class when I was trying to work as part of a group that was having a direct impact in my performance at a group level. That was a vicious cycle that was being very harmful to my learning and to my self-confidence, confidence in myself.
Al principio me costó adaptarme a la idea de tener mi teléfono guardado en un sobre magnético, pero con el tiempo me ayudó a estar presente en el aula y mejoró mi capacidad de concentración.
I have to say it was very difficult at the beginning. It was very difficult to accept the idea that I had to have my phone in a type of a magnetic type of envelope or something like that. But as time passes by, then it helped me to be able to be present in my learning, to be able to be present in my classroom. And it had improved my capacity or my ability to be able to concentrate and pay attention to what I was learning.
One minute left.
En sociedad latina está solicitando que BPS cree un comité que incluya estudiantes, padres, y tutores, organizaciones externas que trabajen con la juventud para asesorar sobre la política de no teléfonos móviles de BPS. Tenemos que entender que lo que está funcionando y lo que tenemos que mejorar.
So, what Sociedad Latina is advocating for, and they are a look for, is that BPS creates a committee that is inclusive of all students, parents, tutors, and external organizations for their purpose of working together for our youth to be able to sponsor and to enable the policy against the use of cell phones at school. That is very important. We do have to understand very well what is happening right now and that we do have to understand that it is critical for us to improve this by creating a policy against the use of cell phones.
En nuestra reunión de abrir con Sociedad Latina, acordó crear este comité para examinar el uso que hace el distrito de la tecnología, incluida la política celular y los medios sociales. ¿Cómo cree que se creará este comité? Nuestros hombres están quedando atrás.
Well, it was, back in April, it was agreed upon that Sociedad Latina, we were planning to create a committee to be able to understand and to check the use of cell phones at the district level, anything regarding technology, including any policies regarding impeding use in cell phones and different impacts on social media as well. So, how long is it gonna take to create this committee? That was a conversation we had back in April. Our youth are waiting, our youth are being left behind without a proper creation of a policy that impedes limitations on the use of phone, cell phones.
Todos podemos hacer lo mejor, estudiantes y adultos juntos, gracias a todos.
So, we should be able to do a better job of working together in alliance. Students, adults, all together, we should be able to do a better work regarding this. Thank you very much for your attention today.
Thank you very much. Our next one, you can stay. Our next speaker, Diabelis Infante, will also need Spanish support.
Hola, buenas noches. Hola, buenas noches, Superintendente Speaker y miembro de Comité Escolar de BPS.
Good evening, everyone, and I am a superintendent speaker and members of the school committee. Good evening to everyone.
Mi nombre es Diabelis Infante y soy residente de Dorchester.
My name is Diabelis Infante and I do reside in Dorchester.
Me dirijo usted desde Sociedad Latina, una organización de desarrollo juvenil ubicada en Roxbury.
I'm here on behalf of Sociedad Latina, it's a youth organization and we are located in Roxbury.
Como líder juvenil de su equipo de organización comunitaria juvenil.
Because I'm a leader, I'm a youth leader and I am part of this organization.
Como joven puedo ver los impactos negativos y demasiado tiempo en la pantalla, los daños de los medios de comunicación social, incluyendo la comparación poco saludable.
So, being a young person, I do believe that the impact, the negative impact that this is having is very harmful, considering the amount of time that students are having on their own screens on their cell phones and the damage that the, the social media is doing in general, including, including unhelpful comparisons when you compare to someone else just by looking at the social media, including this, disinformation as well.
La desinformación, el racismo y la autolección y el acoso cibernético.
So, this could lead to many different things, things, disinformation, racism, and the, what has to do with abuse, cyber abuse, that is, cyber harassment.
También me preocupa cómo la inteligencia artificial puede traer más confusión si no la entendemos bien.
I'm very concerned as well the impact that artificial intelligence could have if we have not, not a good understanding of what artificial intelligence is.
Me inquieta que, me inquieta que sin educación adecuada la haya puedes ser refuerzamientos de perjuicios, difundidos, informados erróneamente y tomar decisiones que afectan nuestra vida.
So, it is very concerning to me, it is very concerning to me, the fact that artificial intelligence could use to, could be used or misunderstood or in creating different biases, different prejudices. Well, if we do not understand very well what artificial intelligence is, if it is not properly used.
Con el aumento de la inteligencia artificial, la desinformación y los malentendidos sobre el funcionamiento de estos algoritmos ya se está expresando por todo el mundo.
So, we have to understand very well to the increase in the use of artificial intelligence itself, it has to do with disinformation as well. So, there are misunderstandings that are being created because people do not understand very well what artificial intelligence is. The different use of different algorithms and different things are expanding throughout the world and misunderstandings are taking place because of this artificial intelligence.
Así que estamos disfrutando que BPS ofrece talleres y enseña a los estudiantes y a familias sobre la ciudadanía digital responsable y el afermitación.
Thirty seconds.
Digital y empezar ya en las escuelas primarias.
So, it is very critical, what we are asking BPS basically is the offering of different workshops related to artificial intelligence to be able to teach the students and their families regarding the implications of digital citizenship in a very responsible way, and that is very critical to anything that has to be with the digital. And we have to start with the schools and elementary schools, elementary schools, that is critical as well.
En esta reunión de abrir con los jóvenes de Sociedad Latina.
We had a meeting, as we mentioned before, in April with the youth at Sociedad Latina.
Usted acordó crear un comité formado por partes interesadas extremas y personal de BPS.
So, the agreement is that the committee was going to be created with people that were involved in BPS and all the informed parties that were going to be part of this committee, the stakeholders.
Para examinar el uso del distrito de la alfabetización mediática tecnológica.
And many different topics were talked about to be able to create this learning, the mediatic technology and this, anything that has to do with digital citizenship as well.
Thank you very much, your time is up. Our next. Our next speaker is Danielle Sarah, followed by Ladaniel Payne. Then we would have to call him up when we go on Zoom. The next speakers are Athena Wang, Marshall Rayner, Jen Lewis, and Deirdre Manning. Athena Wang? Marshall Rayner? Jen Lewis? Deirdre Manning?
Good evening, my name is Deirdre Manning. I am a single parent and sole financial supporter of two public school students. As I testified last month, Mahamuda, an immigrant parent of a fifth grader at the Kilmer, was offered a seat for her child next year at the Orinberger. Parents panic when they realize their child's school is not a Title I school and their child has zero or a greatly reduced chance of being admitted to an exam school. She obviously did not understand that uprooting her child with a move to a Title I school for sixth grade would not give her child bonus points. When the committee is finally provided data on the last admission cycle and on the four areas identified for further analysis, the committee will not likely be informed that the rate of admission to exam schools for non-Titel I BPS schools will be inflated because five students from the Elliott received admission because they were students in the fifth grade at the Warren Prescott and received bonus points. Where is the deeper analysis promised by the superintendent's December eighteenth presentation when she said they'd look at seat allocation and localizing bonus points? The BPS superintendent report mentions bright spots at every meeting, but challenges are rarely brought up unless a news story identifies an incident or concern. I agree that there are pockets of excellence within BPS, but school committee members should demand action and data from BPS administrators when the public brings concerns during public testimony. Last month, families were offered two information sessions for the next admissions cycles to exam schools. There was no mention of possible changes. There was, however,
Thirty seconds.
misinformation about data availability. The percentage of financially disadvantaged students' data was published in January of 2025, and it's the eighth most popular download, but it wasn't said, it was said that it was unavailable. Families in the city should have their concerns addressed. Data should be provided in a timely manner and the data should be accurate. Most importantly, BPS should be preparing all students to succeed at an exam school. The exam school admission policy should be equitable and ensure that applicants all across the city have an opportunity to compete.
Thank you very much, your time is up. Our next group of speakers is Sharon King, Luisa Harris, Michelle Sanchez, Brooke Payne, and Valentina Pedrosa. Sharon King?
Hello, my name is Sharon King. I am the executive director of the Lidi Ligo Vito Ligo Community Network. I am from Mattapan, Massachusetts. I am here today to share my testimony in support of the Urban Achievers High School. My son, Ladaniel Payne, who will speak later, is someone who has been with Lino Sanchez since he was six years old. When he was old enough to play basketball, we were given a choice. We could put him on a team where he'd be a superstar, score a bunch of points. Or we can put him with an up-and-coming coach who was new to the scene, well, new to the program, to the AAU program. But we'd teach him more than that, we'd teach him more than basketball, we'd teach him values, teach him how to be a young man. So, it was a no-brainer. And I can honestly say that's probably the best decision I've made as a parent. The way Lino has cultivated my son's talents, has cultivated him as a young man. There are so many stories I can tell you about how his Urban Achiever, that's what the basketball team was called, the Urban Achievers, and how those boys showed on multiple occasions that they were young men, you know. I think that this school is so important because there are so many kids that look like my son that identify and they find their strength in sports. And I think a school that will provide them with the opportunities,
Thirty seconds.
that my son will elaborate on later, is important, you know, to be unsure about what you're gonna do with your life, but know that it's gonna involve sports, to have a school that can speak directly to that. That is very important and I think it would be very beneficial to this city. These opportunities are scarce. So, I think any opportunity to uplift and really be interested in what these So I think any opportunity to uplift and really be interested in what these kids are interested in and say, yes, it's more than a ball, I think.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Luisa Harris.
Hello, everyone. Can I start? Oh, thank you. So thank you for listening to us. I'm here advocating for the Henigan Pool to be reopened. You may know or not know, so I'm going to give a quick overview. So parents, neighbors, organization, youth organization like High Square Task Force and others are advocating to reopen this amazing facility that we have right in our neighborhood. We are beyond grateful to have such an existing center where other neighbors don't even have. And however, this pool has been overlooked for, please forgive me, about ten plus years. And we have been softly advocating for it this year. Last year, we decided to really go all the way. Aside from a variety of physical activities that can be offered, it has become clear to us in advocating that there is a need to reach out and engage parents in a constructive, uplifting and useful way. While the kids do the sports, we can create classes for the parents. I'm sure you would agree that access to physical activity has beneficial social and health consequences for everyone. Learning to swim saves lives, opportunity to social interaction through
Thirty seconds.
while sports activity. Well, and other, many other benefits like working out, reduce obesity, which is, can be a big problem for kids and adults. We have the opportunity through this center to really overcome these, these problems. What we ask is, so we have a meeting with Brian Ford next week.
Thank you, your time is up. Please send your comments, your written comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michelle Sanchez.
I'm gonna go fast because I thought I had three minutes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Sanchez. Thank you for having me here. I'm a founding teacher and principal of the Epiphany School, founding member of the Bridge Boston Charter School and founder of the Early Learning Center. I'm a lifelong educator who has dedicated my career to building schools in Boston that put children and families first. Tonight, I'm here standing in strong support of a school that's ready to do the same, Urban Achievers High School. I also stand here as the wife of Lino Sanchez, a man I've had the honor of walking beside for decades as he has quietly but powerfully changed the lives of hundreds of younger people across Boston. You've heard, you will hear about his journey growing up in Boston as a BPS student, as a young man living on the streets and in prison. You will see the man standing before you today is not that man. I know his heart, his work ethic, his deep belief that every child, every single one is capable of greatness when we build systems worthy of them. Urban Achievers is exactly that, a school worthy of our children. Its curriculum, built on mass standards, will not only be rigorous, but also liberatory. Built on the foundation of academic excellence and cultural relevance, where students will read great literature, master complex math, explore science and civic responsibility, and see themselves reflected in this learning. It will integrate inquiry, project-based learning, and early college and career exposure, giving them tools to navigate and transform the world around them. Rooted and moving into a world they love, sports. But what truly sets Urban Achievers apart is not the vision,
Thirty seconds.
its execution. So much has already been well planned. The team has already raised over three million dollars before even opening its doors with a rare and powerful signal of trust. Founders, families, and partners are saying, we believe in this, we need this. Don't, we don't raise that kind of money without a rock solid plan. Urban Achievers has the pieces, what it needs now is your approval. Let's not make families wait another year for the kind of school their children deserve. Let's say yes to excellence, yes to equity, yes to Urban Achievers.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brooke Payne Jr.
How are you guys? Good evening. Again, my name is Brooke Payne Jr. I'm on behalf of also Urban Achievers High School. There's so much I could say, there's so much that comes to mind. I think the point that we're all trying to make is a place like this, it takes a village. Getting back to the roots of where we come from and what we look for in not only our schools, but the people associated with our schools. A lot of times that word and everything is summed up in family. These individuals that are part of this program are family. Like my family. My father, Brooke Payne of New Edition, my cousin Ronnie DeBeau. My other family is Roy Haynes, Dr. Michael. So much so that Mr. Walsh even proclaimed us as the Payne-Haynes and Clark Day, July twenty first, twenty seventeen. That's what we are bringing to this city, pioneering into what can be next and setting the standard for what can be, not what was. I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Valentina Pedrosa. So we are, we are going to start with our online speakers. There are a couple of speakers that are going to be online that were signed up for in person. Our next, our first speaker would be Ladaniel Payne. Please unmute yourself and turn on your camera.
Hello, can you guys hear me? Hello?
Hi, you can start.
All right. Hello, as you may know, my name is Ladaniel Payne. I'm a sophomore at Bremer &amp; May. And I remember my first day with Urban Achievers Basketball Club like it was yesterday. I walked in with my head down, duffel bag on my shoulder, unsure of what was to come. Little did I know. I was not only setting foot into the gym, but also a family that I wouldn't trade for the world. Coach Lino has prepared me for everything I am currently encountering as I transitioned from public to prep school. My name and my talents make lasting impressions because of the influence, like the influence that I have in my life, like Coach Lino, who have been preparing me for this stage since I was six years old. I currently hold three offers to Division One colleges, including Boston University. And I'm confident there is more to be, there is more to come because I am an Urban Achiever. In the time we spend together, I've grown more than as just a basketball player, but as a young man. Coach Lino is a bonus parent to me, constantly placing me and my friends and me and my friends in like greatest positions that he could possibly place us in. And now I imagine what it would be like if every student that would attend the Urban Achievers School. Oh geez, I'm sorry. Now I imagine what it would be like if every student had the same experience, not just in sport, not just in a sports club, but every
Thirty seconds.
What if there was a school built entirely around that idea? A place where students feel supported, empowered, and seen for who they really are. That's where Urban Achievers High School could be, a place, students don't just get an education, they find a community and a place to belong, just like me and just like a bunch of my friends. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is going to be Marshall Rayner. Marshall is not in the meeting, so we will try later. Valentina Pedrosa.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, can you please turn on your camera?
I'd rather not. Is that okay?
Is this a student?
Are you a student?
Oh, okay, hold on one second. I'll turn. I apologize. Can you see me? There you go. Hello? So my name is Valentina Pedrosa. I am here on behalf of Urban Achievers High School. I want to tell a story. I, Urban Achievers is more than just a sports school. Urban Achievers has been going on for over ten years, ten plus years. And I was one of the first few students that Urban Achievers impacted back when it was a small club at the Epiphany School in Dorchester. And Lino would take us out and he'd take us on trips and really emphasize the importance of education and excellence. From there, I went on to attending a Boston Public School at the John D. O'Brien. And I want to just say that I'm a product of Lino Sanchez's care and commitment to children's and students' success and excellence. I would truly believe that without the support of Lino, I wouldn't have been able to attend Welsey College and continue on in the current, like, in just the current place that I am. His main goal has always been academic excellence. And he, like, again, Urban Achievers is more than just a sports school. It's a community that was meant to uplift and support students in all areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Abraham Sarah.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, could you please turn on your camera?
Okay, yeah. No problem. All right, can you see me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, I'll just get, I'll just get going. Hello, I, I'm Abraham, a member of the Health and Wellness Piers at Roxbury Times of Harvard. We are a group of people that are passionate about bringing light to the disciplinary issues of students around schools everywhere and addressing that through the use of restorative practices. From our research of surveys from volunteers around different schools, we have seen that only thirty percent of students are satisfied with the way students are disciplined in their schools and a whopping forty-one percent of students say no to the way students are treated by school administrators and faculty. We have also seen that sixty-six percent of students are open to the implementation of restorative practices in the schools. And seventy-two percent of people say that restorative practices help bring communities together. From these numbers, we decided that because students are mainly being the ones affected, that students have, should have the opportunity to be trained in restorative practices so students can partner up with adults and build a community we're sharing. From my experiences as a sixth grader, I have seen how students talk about the unfairness of discipline in middle school. The students complain about the facts, how the adults don't really care about what the students have to say and usually resort to lunch attentions, phone calls to parents, or even suspension. Many, including myself, have noticed that, many including myself, have noticed the way students only have a few options, most of them leading to punishment. I don't believe that this is a
Thirty seconds.
I, I don't believe that this is a very effective solution as this makes students more aggressive and lash out at staff, which repeats the cycle. A better solution, as I stated before, would be, would be to give the students opportunity to lead these circles and have the opportunity to communicate their feelings to other people going on through similar experiences as an individual. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Gretchen Curran.
Hello, you can start. My name is Gretchen. I'm a senior at BLS. I live in Dorchester. And I'm here with the Climate Resilient Schools Youth Cohort. Me and Vin, another BLS student, who you will hear from later, have been working on a resolution around zero waste and climate education policy in BPS. Our resolution is in addition to the existing policy and we are currently researching gaps. We appreciate the current zero waste policy in BPS and would like to note that recycling is free for every school and a zero waste team is currently running a compost pilot program. In 2022, the policy committed to implementing a composting and recycling with increase in schools each year. So far, six have front and back of house composting, while thirty-three have back of house. But it's unclear what measures have been taken to enforce and expand this commitment. We'd like the district to communicate how it is being reinforced district-wide. Schools can apply for free recycling and composting equipment, but we would like to ensure that the district and zero waste team are proactive and broad in their outreach to schools, especially with those who need the most aid. Additionally, the policy stipulates that each school should have a zero waste coordinator and team, but enforcement varies and many of these teams are student-led, such as my own. We would like to see schools receive further support in establishing these teams so that they are more stable. This should happen at an administrative level and not just on a student volunteer basis. Thank you. That's all I have for today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vin Wen.
Hi, my name is Vin. I'm also a student at Boston Law School and I'm with the Climate U Climate Coalition School Court. And in addition to Gretchen, we've been researching the statewide curriculum and graduation requirements. Neither includes a climate or environmental education. We are also focusing on interdisciplinary climate education in Boston Public Schools. Standards do not require climate education to be integrated into all courses. We appreciate that the SDE has made recommendations regarding climate education, but it ultimately falls into each district and teacher to incorporate these important topics into their lessons. Climate education should be a foundational standard across all subjects, ensuring that every student understands its relevance. Regarding interdisciplinary climate literacy plan, we plan, we plan a graduation requirement that ensures that all students are climate literate. What does this mean? A student who is climate literate has a basic understanding of the value of the courses, causes, impacts, and solutions to climate change. They seize a possibility for themselves in the climate movement and a pathway towards greater involvement. If you are empowered to be a leader in the climate movement and they are prepared for civic engagement in the environmental stewardship. Next, regarding establishment of a climate education task force or committee. We know that the Boston Teachers Union and Boston Public Schools has committed to the establishment of a joint climate literacy committee. We thank you for your work on this and would like to remain updated on the committee's status throughout the years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Chanel Lewis.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you please turn on your camera? Thank you.
Yeah. My name is Chanel Lewis and I'm a student, I'm an eleventh grade student at Boston Green Academy. And my neighborhood of residence is the South End. And today I'm here to testify in support of BGA's charter, in support of BGA's charter, charter renewal application. Um, I'm really excited to talk about why BGA deserves, Boston Green Academy deserves, um, another five years as a Boston charter school. So to start off, um, coming here at BGA, I first came here in ninth grade in 2022. And basically, I didn't really know much about the school. Um, my parents, like, they had, like, signed me up for it, because, like, after, like, a lot of, like, deep dive information and, like, research, um, they found out, like, how, like, beneficial, like, the school was. Because we do, like, a lot of, like, green infrastructure and sustainability stuff here. Like, for example, I'm in a class called CTE, which also stands for Career Technical Education. And what we do there is, first, we've created, like, a freight farm where we sell our own produce. And we also grow the produce and sell it to other people. Sometimes we sell it for free. Um, tenth graders usually do it, but now in eleventh grade, um, we're currently working on creating, like, our own sustainable development sites. And also last year in tenth grade, we did a OSHA ten-hour certi- certification. Um.
Thirty seconds.
We did a ten-hour OSHA certificate safety plan, and we got to learn, like, um, working safety stuff, and we were to learn new things about it. And also, I feel like our graduation rate over time has risen, like, more than it has for the dropout rates. So that's another thing that's good about our school. And the teachers here, like, they're really good at, like, supporting students. And every year we have no interns and counselors here that anyone can just go to, to, like, vent or, like, talk about their feelings. And also, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Hmm.
Our next group of speakers is Abdul Nasser Mika, Michelle Carmichael, Brian Gonzalez, and John Robles. Abdul Nasser?
Hello?
Yeah, hi, you can start.
Thank you. Um, good evening. My name is Abdul Nasser Mika, and I'm from Dorchester and Roxbury here in support of Lino Sanchez and Urban Achievers. Our current education system was born out of exclusionary practices during a time when black people were considered three-fifths of a person. It's a system that continues to punish those born into poverty by limiting their access to resources and opportunities. While it may wear a different face today, its core remains intact. This isn't an indictment on any one person. It's a testament to the strength of a deeply rooted and harmful system. In the deepest part of my heart, I believe Urban Achievers is a response to that system. An alternative rooted in love, a space that sees students not as test scores or data points, but as whole human beings. We know no two students learn the same. And if we truly believe that, then our education systems must reflect that. We need diverse school environments. And right now, there are students, especially young men, who are being left behind because they don't fit the mold of traditional schooling. Urban Achievers can be a home for them, a place that meets them where they are and walks with them towards where they can go. Students are what matter most. And if we can come together, set aside ego and old ways of thinking, real change is possible. But it starts here. My motivation for becoming an educator stems from my own experiences, specifically, specifically remembering how BPS failed me and my unique way of learning as a student. I became a teacher because I wanted to do something different. Urban Achievers represents a step in that direction. And as an educator, it's a direction I not only wholly believe in, but one I am committed to being a part of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Michelle Carmichael.
Hi, my name is Michelle Carmichael. I live in Hyde Park, and I'm the parent of an eleventh grade student at the Boston Green Academy. I'm here tonight to speak in support of BGA's rechartering application. So I first learned about BGA from a friend who described it as a place where students thrive because the faculty and administrators care about students. On my son's first day of school, I learned about that care firsthand when his planned transportation didn't show up. I rushed from Cambridge, uh, in a panic, trying to get to my son, heard someone outside talking to him, and learned that it was one of the teachers from BGA who did not know my son, but recognized that he was a kid in distress and waited one hour with him until I, I arrived at, at BGA. Uh, the next day I brought this to, uh, someone's attention. It was within five minutes escalated to the head of school, who put me in touch with the sped director, who, before I left the school that day, had my so- son secured with transportation on a yellow school bus. The level of care that my sons received since being at BGA, uh, for these past three years hasn't diminished at all. Teachers remain in touch. Uh, even just this past weekend, uh, on Saturday, one of his teachers reached out to me, uh, to make sure that my son's transportation needs were all set because today he had the AP language exam and today has a half-day at BGA. Uh, and she just wanted to make sure that everything was secure. They were planning for an Uber and everything for him because he is, uh, on the spectrum and has an extra accommodation. Now, I think that, you know, I didn't grow up in Boston. I knew nothing about, uh, BGA. But I tell everyone I know about this school because it is a really great community. They really do care about families, and this is the kind of place that, you know, one of the speakers said tonight, people don't hear enough about the great things that happen in Boston. You only hear about the negative. And this school has just been exceptional for my son. He is thriving here. It is everything that my friend said. Um, you know, the school, I wish it were bigger so that more people could, could go to this school, um, and just continue to thrive.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Brian Gonzalez.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Gonzalez, and I have been a school social worker for Boston Public Schools for the past thirty years. Thank you to the school committee and the superintendent for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf and support of Boston Green Academy's rechartering. Thirty years ago, I was hired at Fenway High School, uh, Boston Public School Pilot School. You may have heard of it. Uh, and it's first-year pilot status. We are located at Bunker Hill Community College. I was with Fenway for thirteen years before pursuing a school management position at Boston Day and Evening Academy. Fifteen years ago, I was recruited to come to Boston Green Academy to help build and support social, emotional, and mental health needs of our students so they could be better equipped to be successful in the classroom. I've had the unique experience of working and witnessing the startup of two schools in my career. I believe I understand what it takes to build a school, a successful school. I have witnessed Boston Green Academy from its birth, uh, to its toddler, to what I call young adulthood right now. Boston Green Academy is a school, a successful school because of its strong leadership, strong teachers in teaching, its investment in students' social, emotional needs, and building a welcoming and safe school culture and climate. I decided fifteen years, I've dedicated fifteen years of my career because to Boston Green Academy because of its mission. I believe in the staff, my colleagues,
Thirty seconds.
and our students. There are many parts of Boston Green Academy that make us a strong school. Um, our extracurriculars and everything that's involved. Thank you for having me, and I'm an honored privilege to work and represent Boston Green Academy.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, John Robles, is not in the meeting. Our next group of speakers is going to be Marchelle Rayner, Barb Barbara Tlalian, Arlene Ashian, and Trisha Sabby. Please raise your hand. Marchelle?
Okay, all right, here we go. This new technology is not for old heads. Uh, thank you for, um, accommodating me. And I would just like to say I'm here, I as a, a member of the Armenian Heritage Park. I live in, um, Avon. But I've been connected to Boston Public Schools for a long, long time. So, having said that, let, let me just say that I'm here tonight to report on a distinct program that has been incorporated in twelve Boston Public Schools, enthusiastically embraced by teachers and, uh, and energetically received by students. Geometry as Public Art introduces the math concept of a rhomboid dodecahedron, and immigration and ancestry to fourth graders. The Friends of Armenian Heritage Park come from many communities in Boston, both North and South Shore. These men and women have worked for thirteen years to ensure that Boston Public students can begin to explore the values of their heritage, explore a different part of the city, and learn more about their classmates.
Thirty seconds.
The adults who support the program have come very enthusiastic about the curiosity of, uh, Boston Public Schools. I'll let Barbara Tlalian give you some history as to the development of the curriculum.
Ms. Rayner, before you, you go away.
Uh, yes.
We are still there. We just want to say hello to you and acknowledge that you are a long-term member of the Boston School Committee, and we're happy to have you on the screen this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Barbara Tlalian.
Thank you. Well, you know, this has been, Marchelle, you're absolutely right. This has been an app, I know I'm taking away for from the two seconds or two minutes, but I have to tell you, I am absolutely impressed. You speak about bright spots. This evening has been full of bright spots, and I'm just delighted to be adding one with Marchelle and Arlene and Trisha to the mix. Uh, this is all about an opportunity that we are so grateful to the Boston Public Schools for working with us to implement and offer the program in the fourth grade classes of several schools. The curriculum is called Geometry is Public Art, and it is inspired by the design, the features of Armenian Heritage Park on the Greenway. And it all came about about twelve years ago when a class from the Advent School came to visit the park. And the park's architect was talking about how the dodecahedron, the split rhomboid dodecahedron that annually changes shape every year in the labyrinth together told the story of the immigrant experience, an immigrant experience that we all share. And the student turned to her teacher, who happened to be standing nearby, and said, "Oh, my, he's talking about me. He's telling my story." Well, that did it. You know, that was our bright spot. And with, with gratitude to the fourth grade teachers of the Elliott school, school that's in the North End, we've developed this three-part curriculum. Uh, the first is discovering geometric shapes in the classroom and being introduced to the About My Family questionnaire, again, with thanks to the fourth grade teachers at the Elliott School. The second lesson is a visit to the park where the students see firsthand how geometry tell the story of, the story of this experience that so many of us share, whether the student in the classroom, his parent, the guardian, or ancestor. But what's also so extraordinary is that it's the warmth and the welcome that we all share with one another when they come. And we are just so impressed with the
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
Oh, come and visit us. Be a part.
Yes, we have, I think, I think they have presented us with a PowerPoint
Yes.
that we will be sharing with all members that will give much more detail about this program. So thank you both.
Our next speaker is Arlene Ashian. Please accept the prompt.
Hi, I'm Arlene Ashton. I'm a friend of the Armenian Heritage Park. Thank you so much for having me. Um, we commend the Boston Public Schools for providing a supportive structure that encourages teachers to creatively engage students in lasting learning, such as this geometry as public art. And we hear this in the comments we get from the teachers about the benefits, which I'd like to share a few with you, such as the connections to family heritage, spending time with the family, looking deeper into their culture. Uh, the teachers learning more about the students and understanding them a little better. One of the teachers, Alyssa Katsiopoulos, commented on the program being a great way to introduce the fourth graders to your larger social studies immigration unit. And teachers totally through all of them that we've met, they mentioned the pride of the students from creating the I Am poems and sharing them. They're very proud of them. So we'd like to thank Marchelle Rayner for your, for her leadership with the park, with the schools, and suggesting that we share this good news. And I'm very happy to represent the park and share this with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Trisha Sabby. Please unmute yourself. Thank you.
Okay?
Yes, you can start.
Okay, good evening. Um, my name is Trisha Sabby. I live in the North End and have the privilege of working with the Friends of Armenian Heritage Park. As part of the group's, um, geometry is public art telling a story, the students write an I Am poem about their own heritage. I'm going to share just one with you tonight. I chose this poem because it reflects the range of emotions that immigrant children may experience, from deep sadness at leaving their home country to equally deep hopefulness that things will be better for their families here in the United States. This is my fourth grade boy. I am Cuban. I wonder how much better my family will be. I see the open water out of the glass. I want to live in a place where there are no food limits. I am overjoyed. I pretend that I won't miss my old home. I feel hopeful. I touch the cold wall of the plane. I worry that people will take stuff from my family again. I cry because I'm scared. I'm hopeful. So, I mean, this is just one poem of so many, and and if any of you have a chance to come visit us at the park when, um, the groups of children come, please, please do.
please, please do. It's a great, it's a great event, a great day with the kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Mike Heischman, is not in the meeting. Cheryl Buckman. Please unmute yourself. So Cheryl, if you can't mute yourself, maybe you can go out and back in. Meanwhile, we will call for the next speaker, Toby Cumming. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Toby Cuman, resident of Newton and supporter and board member of Urban Achievers. I'm here to voice strong support for the proposal to establish Urban Achievers as a tuition-free private school in Boston. Urban Achievers has been transforming lives for years through its after-school and weekend programs, providing mentorship, structure, and a positive environment that helps young people stay engaged, build life skills, and grow into responsible adults. The school will build on that success by offering a sports-centered academic experience. This isn't just about athletics. It's about using sports as a gateway to education, career exploration, and personal growth. Students will be exposed to a wide range of opportunities in the sports industry, aligning their passions with real futures. I've known Lino Sanchez, the founder, for over a decade. My son's trained with him at his basketball camps, and I saw firsthand his unique ability to inspire and bring out the best in kids. He leads with discipline, compassion, and vision. As a yoga instructor, I've also taught the Urban Achievers group, and they were the most respectful and focused teens I've ever worked with. That's a direct reflection of the values Lino instills. Because I believe so deeply in the mission and Lino's leadership, I'm also a financial supporter. This school has the potential to change lives and to strengthen Boston by investing in young people who will grow into engaged, successful members of the community. I respectfully urge you to vote in favor of establishing the Urban Achievers School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Cheryl Buckman.
Sorry about that, the technology. As I was saying, my heart is heavy, yet filled with profound gratitude and deep love. I announced that due to my health issues and support my son as he enters the next phase of his education journey, I'll step back from my active advocacy work. I did make a promise to see the Dever's full and final transitions through, and I intend to honor that promise. This community has shown me something truly extraordinary. The collective effort, the unwavering dedication, the strong spirit, it has been nothing short of unprecedented. It has filled my heart with such awe and profound respect. Working alongside the Dever teachers, staff, parents, and community members has been one of the greatest honors of my life. I also want to thank the amazing principal for having such faith in the work I was doing. For almost seven years, I have been an advocate, and it's been a beautiful ride. I will deeply miss doing this vital work, but I will be cheering on those parents, educators, and advocates, and students from the sidelines. The many bonds and friendships I've made along the way will stay forever in my heart. I want to close by thanking those who have sent me well wishes and acknowledge the work I've done. As my time winds down in this active role, my focus remains on my promise to the Dever community. And I leave you with this. Our job is not done yet. We still have work to do, and I thank you all for keeping your word and listening to the Dever community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker, Abby Tran, is not signed into the meeting. So, that concludes public comments.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Pravex, and thank you to all of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. Our first action item this evening is the Grants for Approval, totaling $99,483. I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments. Is there anybody else here that can talk to us about grants? She returns. Thank you.
Good evening again.
Okay.
So, we have four grants being presented this evening totaling $99,483. The first grant is the Digital Divide Grant. It's a new grant totaling $5,000, serving 622 students at the Blackstone. The purpose of the grant is to expand equitable access to digital learning tools and bridge the technology gap many of our students face, both at school and at home. It addresses inequities in access to technology, and the program will enhance learning environments, promote equitable access to resources, foster student well-being and academic engagement, strengthen ties between schools and the broader community organization like the NFL Foundation. The second grant is the NFL Play 60 Grant, and it is a new grant totaling $10,000, also serving the students at the Blackstone. It encourages students to be physically active for at least 60 minutes per day. Blackstone Elementary will expand opportunities for movement and wellness through structured physical education, recess enhancements, after-school sports, and school-wide fitness challenges. The third grant is the Inspired Fellowship Grant. It's a new grant totaling 1,500 and serving one staff member at Boston Collaborative. The purpose of the grant is to provide funding for the Inspired Fellow, who are in-service professionals committed to increasing the diversity of our teacher workforce, leveraging their backgrounds, personal stories, and connections to inspire future diverse educators. And our fourth and final grant this evening is the Title III Part A Immigrant Children and Youth Grant. This is a supplemental portion of the Title III allocation that's awarded later in the year. It's totaling $82,983 and serving immigrant students across the district. The purpose of the grant is to ensure our newcomer students have access to quality educational opportunities and resources focusing on improving language skills and academic performance.
Thank you. And I'll open it up to members for any questions, comments.
Just for the, particularly for the first two, are there any particular, not criteria, but are there any particular metrics that you all are looking for to evaluate your desired outcomes?
So, the school will be using their student data. They also have, they'll be sending out materials and tools to families for the technology aspect, and so they'll be tracking those. For the second, I think generally the school would be using their climate data as well as other, other outcome measures.
No, that's, that's helpful. I'm particularly thinking of the Digital Divide one. So, is this a new, developed digital literacy curriculum? Or has it already been something that we've been employing in the district?
I'm not sure about that one, so I'll have to look into it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sorry, Chair. Monica, can I ask, do you know on the Digital Divide Grant, it reads as if this is a continuation of some sort at the Blackstone? Do you happen to know that on the technology side?
I don't have a lot of detail on this grant in particular, but I think we can certainly follow up and confirm. This one is from the Patriots Foundation, so we think might actually be a new grant.
It is, yeah.
It's a new grant.
Yeah.
The new grant.
At least coming through the BPS process, it's new. If they made a donation directly.
Yeah, I just saw that in the detail.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. If there are no further questions or discussions, thank you very much for stepping in. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the grants are approved. Our second action item for tonight is the approval of the in-kind donations with a total estimate value $24,585.57. I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Well, this is pickleball. Bringing pickleball to BPS, so we're, we're really happy. As you can see, there's a list of schools that will be supplied with the startup materials for that.
Are there any questions, comments? No.
Pass the scrolling sport.
It's a little noisy, but we will not bother our neighbors with that. Anyway, if there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the in-kind donations as presented. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the in-kind donations are approved. Okay, our next three action items relate to the approval of the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and the Administrative Guild, FCIU Local 888, which was presented earlier this evening. We will be taking three separate votes tonight regarding this agreement. I'll now open it up for any questions and comments from the committee. Okay. If there's nothing further, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and the Administrative Guild, FCIU Local 888, as presented. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravex, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Kenard Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa, Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. Our next action item is the Fiscal Year 25 Supplemental Appropriation Request to the Boston City Council in the amount of $394,901 to support the Administrative Guild, FCIU Local 888 contract. I will now open it up to comments and questions from the committee. There's nothing further. I will now entertain a motion to approve the Fiscal Year 25 Supplemental Appropriation Request in the amount of $394,901 to support the Memoranda of Agreement for Successor Collective Bargaining Agreement for the period September 1, 2024 through August 31, 2025, between the Administrative Guild, FCIU Local 888, and the Boston School Committee. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Thank you. Second, thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravex, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Ms. Kenard Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa, Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. Our last action item is the Fiscal Year 26 Supplemental Appropriation Request to the Boston City Council in the amount of $977,749 to support the Administrative Guild, FCIU Local 888 contract. I'll now open it up to questions and comments from the committee. If there's nothing further, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the Fiscal Year 26 Supplemental Appropriation Request in the amount of $977,749 to support the Memoranda of Agreement for Successor Collective Bargaining Agreement for the period September 1, 2025 through August 31, 2026, between the Administrative Guild, FCIU Local 888, and the Boston School Committee. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravex, please call the roll.
Thank you, Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Ms. Kenard Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa, Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. Our next action item is a vote on the school trust expenditures to allow the school committee to annually appropriate, approve the expenditure from the trust funds and for BPS finance to load the trust funds directly into school budgets that was presented earlier this evening. I will now open it up to questions and comments from the committee. If there's nothing further, I will now entertain a motion to approve the school trust expenditures as presented. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravex, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Kenard Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa, Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. Our next action item is the superintendent's recommendation to withdraw the Boston Public Schools from the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year 25-26. You will recall that the recommendation was presented to the committee at our April 16 meeting, and we held a public hearing on the School Choice Program at the beginning of today's meeting. I will now invite the superintendent to offer any final comments.
Thank you, Chair. So, tonight, we're asking school committee to vote on the district's participation in the Massachusetts Inter-District School Choice Program for the upcoming school year 25-26. At the last meeting, Dr. Anna Tavarez, Deputy Superintendent of our Family and Community Advancement and Chief of Family Advancement Officer, Magali Sanchez, presented our recommendation for the district's continued nonparticipation in the School Choice Program. Earlier tonight, we held the required public hearing. Is our recommendation that the Boston School Committee vote to opt out of the Inter-District School Choice Program for school year 25-26? Chair Robinson will review the vote language before the vote. While I strongly support experimentation, and we internally discussed a pilot when this was raised at the first reading, pursuing a pilot now would pull crucial time, resources, and focus away from our current critical priorities, which, as we've discussed as a committee, are long-term facilities, are inclusive ed, are equitable literacy and high-quality instructional materials, are early college pathways, hub schools, and accelerating academic performance overall. It's just really critical that we maintain a focus on those existing initiatives. Chief Sanchez is here tonight to answer any questions the committee may have. But at this point, Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Great. Thank you. I'll now open it up to questions and comments from the committee. All right, just-
I'll say something. I think, I think a lot of things. I think we call ourselves a city that welcomes everyone, yet every argument I've heard against even considering this program reeks of bias and misinformation. The lack of innovation runs counter to common sense solutions during an enrollment in budget crisis. But more importantly, it runs counter to my values for choice and access. For the last three years, I have asked us to take up this conversation. My questions have been avoided, replaced by fear mongering about why we can't, and no real analysis as to why we should and could. So, let me be clear. We have the power and flexibility to design a school choice program. We can choose which grades, how many seats, set clear, responsible parameters. For those concerned about our exam schools, we could expand those seats to serve more families tomorrow. Forget school choice. If we moved forward with this, we could choose to limit enrollment to Boston residents. For those concerned about special education and bilingual programs, we set the- we set the budget. The reason it's underfunded is because we haven't funded it. We approve the budget every single time. So the point is, we set the policy, we get to be creative. I have a few facts, because I keep looking at what we've been given, and it just feels like we are being scared into a decision. We have a housing crisis. Much of our workforce doesn't live here. Any parent knows it's tough to work far away from your kids. 2022, Boston Globe said more than half of Boston City's workforce lives outside of the city despite a residency requirement. BPDA in 2023 said only 38% of Boston's workforce both live and work in Boston. Most commute from outside, often due to high housing cost. Those children of those who serve Boston every single day deserve a chance to attend our public schools. Equity demands access, number two. Mathematica in 2019 said districts who participated in inter-district school choice saw an increase of 18% in racial and economic integration. Urban Institute in 2020 saw that school, just inter-district choice significantly increases access to high-performing schools for low-income and minority students. Denying access perpetuates economic and racial segregation. Number three, the $5,000 myth, the real cost. So let's be clear, the idea presented to us is that $5,000 per student from the state means we lose money. It's simply untrue. So here's how it actually works. The state pays Boston $5,000 for every student we accept through school choice. We were told it takes $30,000 to educate a kid here. But that's not how school budgets work. The real question is, what does it actually cost us to add one more student? Marginal cost is the extra cost to educate one additional student when you already have teachers, building, buses, et cetera. Fixed costs, like building maintenance, principal salaries, utilities, don't change when you add a single student. Variable costs, like textbooks, supplies, or lunch, do go up and down, but not by much. They average a cost per student. So then there's national research here, and education and finance experts, Edweek and the Reason Foundation. They both estimate that in a typical urban district, the marginal cost to add one more student is about $3,200. That means it costs us $3,200 in extra expenses to educate one new student, as long as they're not adding enough students to acquire a new classroom or a teacher. So here's my math. If Boston gets $5,000 per new student and spends $3,200 in extra costs, that's $1,800 net gain per student, money we can use to support students across the district. 14% of BPS seats are empty, the equivalent of several high schools. I'm not saying we fill those. I don't even think there will be interest for them, but definitely not a reason to shy away. Districts like Brockton, Fitchburg, Worcester have used school choice to stabilize enrollment and generate revenue. There is revenue here. If 5,000 was a loss, these districts wouldn't participate year after year. And then here's one more. Outcomes improve with choice. Stanford CEP A in 2021 found that students in inter-district choice programs graduate at rates 7% higher than their, their previous district average and are 11% more likely to enroll in college. Brookings in 2023 found that districts with robust school choice see 4% higher outcomes in math and reading scores system-wide. Lastly, I have researched this clearly, deeply. We don't pay for transportation for special education students who are being sent from their district. The sending district pays for them. What are we afraid of? Serving kids, other districts following suit, and subsequently more choice for families, or greater accountability for us to deliver high-quality options? I urge us to participate. I wish the district would have given us something to bite on, but I don't think it's reason to say no.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Okay. We'll move on. Just to be clear, a yes vote means that the district hereby agrees not to participate in the school choice program. And I will now entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to withdraw the Boston Public Schools from the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year 25-26 as presented. Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravex, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Abstain.
Mr. Kedret Hernandez?
I forgot the rules. I'm voting no is to not withdraw.
Yes.
So no.
Ms. Lima Barbosa, Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
I say a few things.
Sorry?
Let me make a comment before I vote. I agree everything that Member Brandon Kedret Hernandez has mentioned. I think that was a very thorough research. But beyond that, my moral and my my strong adherence to DEI, with the exception of this new, new administration, is, is at odds with each other. My DEI belief and adherence extend beyond Boston City. While I while I must profess that, it is going to be very hard for me to vote yes, but given the need to pass this for this year, and there are many other issues that are very important before us that may take precedence to this, while I share deeply and wholeheartedly with Member Brandon's analysis and belief, it is my it, it is my vote at this point. Just to make sure that it passed, will be yes. So yes, I will, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The, the motion passes with four yays, one and one nays.
Pass.
One person abstained.
Right, thank you. Our final vote tonight is student incident documentation policy. As you recall, the recommendation was presented at the April 16 meeting. I will now invite the superintendent to offer any final comments.
Thank you, Chair. At the last school committee meeting on April 16, excuse me, my team walked you through the revised BPS incident documentation policy. As a reminder, in 2020, this body voted to approve the student information policy, but the law changed at the end of that year. As a result, BPS no longer employs school police officers or has authorization to complete Boston Police Department incident reports. Due to this change, BPS needed to update its policy on how incidences are recorded. We now have a proposed incident documentation policy that we believe reflects our efforts to protect students and their privacy while meeting our legal obligation to document school-based incidents. Legal advisor Lorenzo De Silvio is here, as well as Deputy Superintendent of Operations, Dr. Sam De Pina. Were there to be any remaining questions for the committee? And back to you, Chair.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to, for questions and comments from the committee. Okay. I will now entertain a motion to approve the student incident documentation policy as presented. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravex, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Kedret Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa, Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now transition to the reports. Our first report this evening is the Boston Green Academy Charter Renewal. Let's aim to keep the presentation within 10 minutes, and I'd like to remind our presenters to please at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. And I want to invite the superintendent to give some introductory.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Boston Green Academy School Leader Matt Holzer is here tonight as part of the school's charter renewal application. Just a reminder that as an in-district charter school, BGA must seek school committee approval of its application for charter renewal. Uh, this is the school's fourth five-year charter renewal. Uh, and I also see Alex Chu is here as well, who is BGA Board Chair. Welcome. Uh, BGA has already received the approval of the BGA Board of Trustees and is currently being reviewed for approval by the Boston Teachers Union. Uh, serving a diverse population, BGA's curriculum is focused on sustainability and preparing students to study and work in fields related to climate resiliency. I'm incredibly proud of the progress BGA continues to make. Its success is reflected in its waitlist, as well as all its achievements. Uh, Principal Holzer is a familiar face to most of you. Certainly, it's been an honor. We came in as principals together. Uh, and so I've gotten to see the BGA journey along the way. Uh, so at this time, I'll hand the floor over to talk a bit more in the presentation about BGA.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Robinson. Good evening, Superintendent Skipper, members of the Boston School Committee. Thank you for your time tonight, uh, as we put forward our charter renewal for your review and comments. My name is Alex Chu. I am the Chair of the Boston Green Academy Horace Mann Charter School. In this role, I represent the governing body of the school, a collection of passionate and engaged individuals representing a wide swath of school stakeholders. And while we all come from different backgrounds, we have, uh, we unite in our desire for student success and a mission that welcomes diverse students of all abilities, educates and empowers those students to succeed in college and career, and prepares them to lead in the sustainability of our community and our world. Our school outcomes reflect our ongoing dedication to this mission. As you'll hear in detail from Mr. Holzer shortly, we have cut dropout rates, we've raised graduation rates, we've improved 15 points on DESI's accountability measurements, and incorporated MasCor in internship and internship requirements, all as a partner to the school committee and to the district. And yet, as Mr. Holzer is fond of saying, while we are proud of that success, we have more work to do. Whether that is in continuing to support our students and families post-COVID, continuing our improvement of our ELA, our math, and our science scores, or evolving our 20th century, 21st century learning strategies in a building built before Australia was even a country. We look forward to that work and our ongoing partnership with the district and this committee to give our absolute best to the kids and families of the city. With that, I'll pass the presentation to Mr. Holzer, our Head of School for Boston Green Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent, School Committee members. It's nice to see you again. Uh, my name is Matt Holzer. I'm the very proud Principal of Boston Green Academy. I'm now in my 12th year as Head of School. I've been at the school since the beginning. Uh, as part of the design team, uh, it's been quite a journey, and we deeply appreciate the partnership that has helped build a great school for our kids and our community. We always start with our students, uh, and so here's, uh, some visions from them to you. Just this year at BGA, we've started a band. Uh, we have a brand-new music program, part of our arts expansion, which has been fantastic this year. We now offer performing arts. That's High School the Musical the Musical. Uh, again, at a school without a proper theater, but a great theater program. We have our great outdoor classroom. Um, we were honored to have the superintendent and the mayor there to open that work for us. Our first National Honor Society, middle school and high school, has now convened. Our students were the only ones in Boston to present at the Earthshot Prize, uh, a couple of years back, uh, as part of our, um, climate mission, uh, in recognition of that. Uh, that's our track team, uh, which has now won three city league championships without having a track. And, um, our MORE program, which are Young Men of Color Group, uh, led by Brian Gonzo, who you heard from this evening, one of our, uh, original faculty as well. Um, and then our BGA Studios program, part of our maker space, where, uh, every month, our students do a newscast about different topics and different things, and some really hard-hitting journalism, which is a lot of fun as a head of school to answer questions from. And so from all of us to you, thank you for your support, and we want you to know about the great things that are happening at BGA. As we get into some more bullet points, we want to keep that spirit in mind. Uh, BGA, as you know, is a Horace Mann in-district charter school located in Brighton, serving approximately 450 students from grades seven through 12. Uh, we miss our sixth graders, but we are proud to have aligned with the district's, um, configuration and policy. Uh, we are Boston's only school focused on sustainability. STEM is a set of skills. Sustainability is a purpose. And we think our students are well-prepared to advance that in many, many different ways. We have the city's only Chapter 74 CTE program in environmental science. We are proud to have won the United States Green Ribbon Schools Award in 2019, in recognition of being a model sustainable school, and to be a finalist for the Edvester School on the MOVE Prize in 2023, we're in good company with a lot of folks this evening. Founded in 2011 as a restart of a struggling BPS high school, uh, as you may remember, we moved to Brighton, uh, in 2014, expanded to include middle grades long before it was fashionable to do so, uh, and are proud to serve an incredibly diverse population that reflects the city of Boston in every way. Um, we also offer graduation requirements that do incorporate MasCor and exceed the Boston Public Schools graduation requirements, while also offering AP dual enrollment partner, um, a number of partnerships, and our very own green exhibitions in every grade level where our students present and defend about topics that are very important. Who we serve, uh, you can see from our statistics that BGA exceeds both the district and state averages in almost every category. We're proud of that. Um, our English-language learner population is growing, um, and we have made more investments into that population. And, uh, we are also very pleased with some of our latest data, although it is embargoed and I can't discuss it. Having said that, um, we're pleased to support the, the Boston Public Schools, um, in all of its diversity. Uh, our progress, uh, BGA, as you know, has a state-mandated lottery. Uh, it's a name-and-address lottery. Uh, there are no other barriers to coming to BGA. Uh, we have over 650 applicants this year for about 120 seats. Uh, and we're very pleased to attract them from every neighborhood in the city. Uh, about 30% of our students are from Alston-Brighton incoming at this point, but over 50% are from Roxbury, Dorchester, and Matapan, and travel at least an hour each way to get to our school. Um, we have been an inclusion school for almost a decade now, maximizing that. Um, we have been very grateful for the inclusion funds that the district has invested. Uh, we now have five inclusion specialists, one for almost every grade level, pushing and pulling out and doing all sorts of things, and a staff that is extremely hardworking and is 95% dual-certified in core content, as well as an army of hard-working teaching assistants, which is what we call paraprofessionals, because we think that better describes what they do. Um, we retain most of our eighth graders, and, um, we continue to be, um, a highly-selected, non-selective school. Uh, our performance, using the latest public available data, we continue to be above the district average for graduation and below the district average for dropout rates. Um, as Mr. Chu said, we're very pleased to have moved from the fifth to the 20th percentile in DESI's accountability. That's no small feat for us. Um, and also, post-COVID, we've made considerable progress improving attendance and addressing some of the disruptions that we've all been dealing with. And we spoke about MasCor before. Um, since our founding in 2011, we are very proud to have done what the district asked us to do, which was to turn around a struggling school for the benefit of students and families. You can see the statistics there compared to the school that we restarted. Um, more recently, uh, as some of the longstanding members of the committee know, uh, we were very pleased to, um, be removed from DESI monitoring, um, in some significant ways. Uh, DESI released us from probation in 2021, and just this February, released us from the last condition on our charter for academic improvement. Um, that is a huge effort on the part of our community and of the district in support of that, and we're very grateful. Um, it took a village to do that, and we still have more work to do, but we're very proud of our progress. Um, now in 2025, we continue to make progress on MCAS and ACCESS, which is actually part of our CUSIP and, and work that we're very proud to, to be focused on. We've been reducing incidents and suspensions. We've increased student supports tremendously. We have one of the biggest student support teams in the district. Um, we are so proud to now have four full-time arts teachers in a program that is bursting at the seams, which attracts our students, lets them show their talents, and helps us do the work that's so important. And that's in addition to our green programs. And so we're really trying to do all of the things that our students deserve in a space and at a scale that we hope would be bigger, um, to be able to, to fulfill that mission. Um, and we continue to focus on some of our students whose data is not yet where we want it to be. Um, we're very focused on our seventh and eighth graders right now, and we love them, um, but middle grades are challenged for a number of reasons, um, and everybody at BGA is focused on that, including our high school programs. Our work ahead, uh, we want to continue to support students and families post-COVID. Um, we want to continue to make progress on all of the metrics that are important, uh, to everyone. Uh, we are moving from a six-to-a-seven block schedule for next year. We've spent the last 18 months working on this. Uh, we sort of saw the writing on the wall. Uh, we are extremely grateful to our staff, who will be adding 30 new courses next year by doing that, including several APs, dual enrollments, a number of themed electives that our students have asked for, as well as intervention and support programs, uh, for our students who need it. And we'll be able now to do credit recovery and support in-house rather than referring out, um, which is a big, um, goal of ours, to retain students in that way. Um, we would love to expand our CTE pathways and our dual enrollment opportunities beyond what we're capable of doing. We're very creative with what we have, but we know the district wants us to do more, and we know we want to do more as well. Project-based learning has always been a hallmark of BGA, as has our green mission and inclusion. We continue to invest in that. And finally, uh, we continue to partner with the district to identify a long-term facility for us. We're very grateful for the public support of the superintendent to, uh, find that in the future for BGA. Um, and we'll continue to have those conversations. And in the meantime, we will continue to do 21st-century work in a 19th-century building. And in the meantime, we will continue to do 21st-century work in a 19th-century building, which is what we say often at BGA. Please visit us. We'd love to see you there. Our request of the school committee tonight is your approval of our five-year rechartering document, which you have, all 60 pages of it. It's required by statute, as the Superintendent indicated. It's been approved by the BGA Board of Trustees. Our partners at the BTU are reviewing it and discussion. They expect to vote on it at their June 11th meeting. And we are hopeful that you'll approve it before the end of the school year. You have a copy of our Equity Impact Statement. We're very proud of the commitment to equity at BGA and we look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up now to the members for their questions. Questions? Have a good.
Just seeing like the, first of all, thank you for that presentation. First of all, thank you for the presentation and just like looking at the great work you guys have been doing and the improvement. I was just like wondering, what do you guys believe was the best and what did, what most impactful initiatives you guys had to get from where you were before to now? So maybe others, maybe like other schools could use, could mimic the work you guys have been doing.
That's a great question. Thank you. I will say it wasn't one thing, but I can, I can talk about the things that, and these were long-term investments. We have always believed that we have to meet our students where they're at and provide support for them. And so we've invested in a student support team with social workers and counselors since BGA's founding. And we added to that during the pandemic with our SRF funds. And so having those supports for our students was extremely important. Our teachers work extremely hard and adopting high-quality instruction across and materials across all of our content areas was a big step forward for us, moving from some of the more homegrown or patchwork stuff. So we raised the bar for our kids while also supporting them to meet it. And then also being true to our mission. I think it's hard to maintain something that is different or innovative over time, but we have a purpose at BGA and our kids buy into that eventually, even if they don't choose it. When they show up into all of the green partnerships and the freight farm and the green exhibitions and trips and all the things we do, make it relevant and interesting and important for our kids. And those things, I think, combined to create a community that we're all proud of. So I could give you more, but I think those are the things that come to mind.
And then just one more question. Now that you guys are adopting the seven-block schedule, I know there's a lot of benefits that come with it, with the addition of new classes, but what do you have any like cons that like this shorter time for classes? Because I know personally as a student, sometimes I feel like I need more time for certain classes. How are you guys going to deal with that?
That's a great question. We're going to learn a lot. We did not want to reduce the length of our classes. We have 56-minute periods. And so we have adopted what's called a waterfall schedule, where classes will meet four times a week instead of five with some additional supports so that we can continue to offer that without sacrificing class time for students. It's going to make some changes at our school and we'll adapt to that. But I think there are trade-offs in scheduling, but we think it's worth it because now our students can have access to more courses, more rigor and more opportunity. So we'll let you know how it goes. Yeah, they'll let me know how it goes.
All right. Thank you.
The only question I have, I mean, congratulations and thank you for all the hard work you all have continued to do. I've met many of your students and they are wonderful, enthusiastic and people about what they're getting at your school. You said one of the things that you had made some progress on was changes in your, in discipline issues in terms of fewer expulsion, not expulsions, but you know.
Suspension.
Yeah, suspensions, yes.
Thank you, Chair, for your support and for the comments. This is hard work. There's a lot of need and a lot of things that we're working on. But what we have been able to do this year is reduce our overall suspensions. We've reduced our, we've disaggregated suspensions. There are still some hotspots. We track this weekly to look at incidents and things that we can intervene with. We started back in the summer doing, we did about 40 home visits before the year had started. Even for incoming students we hadn't met yet. We reviewed all of their incoming data to build rapport and our student support team did a great job of that. We have contracts. We strive to be restorative justice. I won't say we're perfect, but it's important for us to keep moving in that path. But I think the connections and the relationships throughout the school really drive those things. And so we are working with our students who are responsive to that and we are working even harder with our students who still struggle. It's not, we're not satisfied with where it is, but it is better and we're continuing to focus on it. But it is definitely something that our data shows is centered on a small group of our younger students and helping them self-regulate and manage their emotions, coupled with banning cell phones completely from the building. It was a big step for us. And so we're also going to be adopting an SEL curriculum next year so we can more explicitly teach skills and coping skills, something we've been doing in pockets, but we need to do school-wide for next year.
And just one quick question. Mr. Chair and Head of School Holzer, thank you both for presenting tonight. And the progress of the school over the years has been great, even in the midst of a move from South Boston to Brighton, the age of the building that you have, et cetera. But, you know, moving up out of the DESI, you know, points that you've made tonight. And, you know, we always struggle on this district between schools that have full account of autonomy, right? Which is about 40% of our schools. And so always curious about the willingness of schools that have the autonomy to still willing to work on with district, on district-led initiatives, be it around literacy curriculum or, as you just mentioned, code of conduct, restorative justice, et cetera. Another issue that has, and I know you've always been willing to do that and work with the district, even when you have autonomy to try to find common ground. So thank you for that. Particularly interested in the graduation requirements because you had here MasCor Incorporated. So could you just talk for a bit more about that, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill, for the support and the questions. We started BGA wanting to have more depth and beyond the initial requirements. So environmental science, for instance, is a requirement for all students at BGA. So we have a four-year science requirement and we have a four-year humanities requirement, four years of math and ELA. But we also added other things that we thought were important. We have an internship, which is a graduation requirement as well, a six-week green internship. All of our seniors are out right now doing that.
Love it.
We love it too. We also have phased in other things at times. Community service is one of those things. And so we added those things because we thought they were important and mission-consistent. But we've always tried to stay close to the district. And when the district raised the bar with MasCor, we wanted to make sure that we were doing that too. Some of those things took some time. We have some limitations around phys ed and other things that we're working through. But generally speaking, we have taken MasCor and we call it MasCor Plus. And that also is what led us to the schedule shift to add the seventh period so that we had more of a safety net. With the sixth period, as you know, there's only 24 opportunities to earn a credit and there's 22 credits in MasCor plus others. And so we needed more supports and safety nets for our kids to do that.
So you proactively shifted the schedule and made some adjustments. So you do meet MasCor now or you're almost there?
We're almost there. We're around the edges.
Right. Great. Thank you for that.
I mean, the other thing I think that I would applaud BGA for that's come before the committee is that BGA actually has the same or greater averages when it comes to the continuum of learner that they serve, meaning our multilingual learners and our special education students, both resource and programmatic. So I think that just is, says a lot because when we talk about high-quality seats for our schools, BGA is one of those schools that we look to and hold up and know that if a student's going there, they're meeting that high-quality experience. So we enjoy having them in the, in the portfolio of schools for BPS. They are a Horace Mann and as you know, in the continuum of the kind of furthest over on the autonomy. But I think Matt, in his leadership, has done just an amazing job being one of the district schools. And so thank you for that.
Thank you for the opportunity. We are proud to be part of the Boston Public Schools.
Thank you. Nothing further. We look forward to taking action on this at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our second report is the Graduation Requirement Amendment. Let's aim to keep this presentation within 10 minutes. And I'd like to remind our presenters to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. I want to invite the Superintendent to give introductory remarks. Thank you, Chair. So as you know, four years ago, this body voted to adopt the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's MasCor Framework as the graduation requirement for all BPS students. Since then, the district's been implementing that change. MasCor establishes standardized graduation requirements across all schools. This decision is grounded in creating a high-quality academic experience for all students. We're asking school committee for approval of an amendment to the graduation requirements for students in our alternative schools that would give them an attainable graduation goal. Chief of Teaching and Learning Leslie Miller and Ted Lombardi, our secondary superintendent for college career and life readiness, will give a short presentation tonight and then be available to answer questions.
Great. Thank you, Sue. Appreciate it. And thank you, members of the committee, for your attention and anticipate your good questions. So we were here in the fall and I will very briefly go through the first few slides because they're actually a repeat from the fall, just to give us a little bit of context. Again, the current policy that is in place was voted in May of 2021 and it, the vote was to essentially align our graduation requirements across the district with the MasCor framework. That MasCor framework amounts to 22 credits, four credit seats of English and math, three of science and history or social science, social studies rather, two units of world language, a unit of arts and five units of elective credits. There's also in there the MasGeneral Law requirement around physical education, which is not technically part of MasCor, but it's a separate requirement required by the state. Since that vote, there's been a lot of work in the district, both directly toward these graduation requirements and surrounding it. So the work that you've heard a lot about in equitable literacy and high-quality instructional materials, our course catalog review and scheduling technical assistance, which is where we've been able to match up a lot of our coursework with the MasCor requirements to make sure that student work and student course-taking is appropriately identified and appropriately honored in the MasCor framework. We did go through a process immediately after that vote in 2021 to, to give schools funding to add more FTEs and add teachers. Those were mostly in the areas of physical education, world language and the arts. And then, of course, the work that pretty much anytime I've been here, we've talked about around our pathways work and our pathway development in CTE, early college and innovation pathways across many of our schools. A big takeaway that we've learned in this process and appreciative of Principal Holzer mentioning this, the work that's happened at BGA, it's happened, it's happening in a number of schools, and that is to shift schedules to accommodate more opportunities to achieve this MasCor threshold of credits. So currently, and we talked about this in the fall, many of our schools, over half of our high schools have six-period days. And if you just do simple math, a six-period day only allows for 24 units of study over the course of four years, 22 of which are required under the new graduation requirements, which is not a lot of margin for error in terms of courses counting and accounting for students not completing courses successfully. The new BTU contract does include language around a process for schools to go through, similar to what Principal Holzer was talking about, to shift to a more MasCor-friendly schedule by school year 26, 27 is when they're supposed to go through that process by. That, I won't bore you with that language now. We can talk about that more later if you'd like. The, what we're talking about tonight is a very specific amendment that applies, we're hoping to apply to our standalone alternative education schools. Now, these schools typically take on students when they are 17-plus years old, but, but fairly often students that are 18 or 19 years old and that are typically have less than two years of high school credit, often less than one full year of high school credits. We were talking about students that are potentially two or three years behind in their credits. And we're trying to give them a new school environment to optimize the time they have left, to get them to graduation so that they can move on to a more successful post-secondary environment. For those students, it is very difficult to attain the high threshold of credits that is in the initial proposal for all schools. So our proposal for alternative ed is an adapted version of that. That is 18 credits across, this is across all of our standalone alternative education schools, which currently has a variety of credit thresholds for each of the alternative ed schools. These 18 credits include the 14 core credits that I discussed earlier, four of English, four of math, three of science, three of social studies, which is universal across all of our high schools at this point, as a minimum anyway. And then four units of electives. So it does not include the specific language around world language and arts, but just four units of electives. And then we have done a lot of work and we have a number of our colleagues here tonight to, to answer questions if need be around the college and career exposure that we've implemented and are implementing across our alternative ed schools so that students can not only just graduate, but have that off-ramp into a more successful post-secondary environment. So here is the amendment language that we are proposing tonight. Again, students enrolled in a designated BPS alternative education school must successfully complete a minimum of 18 credits distributed as listed here. In addition to those credit requirements, the curriculum provided to students must include integrated college and career exposure activities and instruction. And students graduating under these requirements must still meet the Commonwealth and district's requirements for competency determination, which we'll discuss in a moment as well, that's applicable to their graduating class. And once again, this does not apply to alternative programs within larger high schools. This applies to our standalone alternative education schools. To take a little bit of a look at our data dive at the impact of this amendment, if you look at the middle column, this is, these are five of our standalone alternative education schools. The percentage on track, given the 22-credit threshold, is in that middle column. And you can fairly easily see the leap and particularly if you look at that bottom row, it's sort of the aggregate. The right column is the percentage on track if we adjust to this 18-credit threshold. And I would just remind the committee that, again, these are students that are typically off-track to begin with if they're enrolling in alternative education schools. So while of course we would love all these numbers to be in the 80s and 90s, you know, percent, these are students that are coming from a deficit in terms of their credits from their prior school. So this acceleration is actually fairly typical as you look at the right column based on our requirements as they stand now. In terms of getting to this place, we have been, there's a meeting structure with our alternative ed leaders that our Director of Alternative Education, Carlos Diaz, runs on a monthly basis. And a lot of their work, starting actually over two years ago, was to discuss this credit threshold because they did have this variability of graduation credits across the alt-ed landscape. So this was, this was, they were central in this process to create this amendment that you're seeing tonight. They were, they were central to its development and that's how this came to be. In addition to the, to the alternative ed amendment, we just want to raise that we are also asking in June for your vote on competency determination for the class of 2026. This would be the exact same threshold that you voted for for the class of 2025. That includes this, what I like to call this sort of MCAS mirror of two years of math and English and one year of science as the competency determination, since the science is a single-course test and math and English are meant to be sort of 10th-grade competency tests. This is our simulation of MCAS now that that test is not part of our graduation requirements. And in addition, just to think about, start thinking about implementation, and we can, again, discuss this in questions if you have them, our Office of School Counseling is going to be creating a transcript review process that encompasses both these graduation requirements and the competency determination requirements so that counselors have one streamlined process to make sure that, that students are on track to graduate and can graduate with a full transcript. And I would also just remind the committee that there's another piece of this sort of happening at state, at state level with the Governor's statewide graduation council that has already begun meeting to develop, with the hopes of developing a statewide framework for graduation in the aftermath of the MCAS vote this past November. Their, the initial set, excuse me, their initial set of recommendations is supposed to be out December of this calendar year with final recommendations next July, in July of 2026. So there may be another chapter of this pretty soon. So again, these are our next steps. At the June School Committee meeting on the 17th, we'll be asking for your vote about this amendment that we mentioned tonight for alternative ed schools, as well as the extension of competency determination, the same policy for this year's graduating class to apply to the, our current juniors, the class of 2026. That is all.
Thank you very much. I'll now open it up for questions, comments.
I'll ask a question. I'm curious, two things. One, thank you for the presentation. And I guess one could hear tonight's presentation, and we talked about this when you presented this to me earlier, and question, are we lowering standards, reducing rigor, not offering students a broad curriculum? And how would you counter that as we look at this decision in front of us?
Sure. I, I can, I can start, Leslie. It's fine. And we also have, just for folks' question, we have Ben Healthed. Here is our head of school at Boston Adult Technical Academy. I mentioned Carlos, as well as Caitlin Gilligan, who's our executive director of School Counseling Services. So if there are questions in those areas, they're certainly here for that. Totally understand your, your point around, around rigor. I think, you know, we have this overarching discussion constantly about rigor versus, you know, adaptability for our, for our students. And the way I would say it is this, I think it is, there is a gray area, and our students in alternative ed are coming in to these schools at, at a deficit. It's, it's nearly the definition of alternative education, right, that we are giving them a different environment at a point in their lives where they are already likely three or four years into their high school experience, and we need to accelerate that experience for them to give them a reasonable outcome for post-secondary success. Now, there's a little bit of a greater good argument of how many students would we lose to dropouts if we did not give them an attainable finish line? And so what we've tried to do here is give them that attainable finish line, not lose any of the core credits in terms of the four core academic areas, knowing that a lot of students are actually coming in, having been exposed to world language and arts coursework in their, in their first schools before they came in. But our alternative education schools are less able to offer some of those electives because they're very small in terms of their, their student population and their staffing. So this was a debate on our end around how do we not limit the ability for more students to graduate while still giving them as much access as we can to a suite of electives that they should have as part of their high school experience?
And then one more question. I started my career in what we called transfer schools, so, but the same idea as alternative education here, at the Harvey Milk School. So I know the population well in some way, though every kid is different. And at a time, there was a debate that other folks were having in New York. I'm curious if this also came up. If you were having two different graduation standards, right, for more traditional students and traditional pathways, and then a different one for folks who are taking an alternative route, why call them the same thing? Why are they both diplomas or traditional? Why is not one an accelerated diploma and the other one's a general diploma? Like, do you follow what I'm saying?
I do. I, I do think, from, to look at it really from an asset perspective, most of our students that come into alternative ed bring with them a set of experiences and a set of abilities. Most of them are, are working in addition to going to school. A lot of them have, you know, additional family obligations, just being that they're older students. So that would sort of be my counter to that, right? If we're truly being, being asset-based about our students, our alternative ed students really bring something different to the table. And if there was a way to codify four credits for their life experience, we would do that and call it the same.
Yeah.
Right? And so I think this is, this is as the same as it gets, given the experiences that they've had in their first schools before they go to an alternative ed setting.
Makes a lot of sense to me.
I'd also just add to your first question. When we think about rigor, the place where we've really pushed and prioritized rigor has been around the implementation of high-quality instructional materials in those, on those core classes. So really ramping things up to ensure that what students have access to is standards-aligned and grade-level-appropriate. Every year, when we release the Instructional Expectations Memo, we share an opportunity for schools to opt in. And after sharing our most recent memo in April, we're now at about 94% implementation of high-quality instructional materials around science, math, and ELA in our, in our, in our alternative ed settings.
Good work. Thank you.
Yeah, and I also think that in terms of the redesign that work that we're doing right now with alt-ed, there's a big focus on ensuring access to early college and career connections in, in ways that have not, never existed in BPS before. And so the idea is to raise the bar on so many different levels for our students who are in alternative education, so that they're not foregoing those opportunities by attending an alternative education. I think the other thing is realistically, we have students that graduate with IB, we have students that graduate with early college credits. We don't differentiate, at this point, the diplomas in those ways. CLA by literacy might be slightly different in that it's a particular designation, but other than that, the BPS diploma is the BPS diploma.
Copy. Just because I have a few more moments left, I do have another question about the competency determination. I guess, what's the trend that's happening across the rest of the state? As a parent, I see that, and I think it is a low standard. Like, I'm thinking about this just for my own kid. As, the educator in me feels exactly the same way, but I'm like coming at this first as a dad. I'm curious, like, what does it look like across, yeah, I'm curious what it looks like across the rest of the state. I, I guess I'm also curious, like, did we do any analysis of what folks are doing globally and nationally?
So we did some initial analysis when this first happened around what other, and frankly, that was really just a lot of phone calls, because districts were in the same place of, we're gonna go to our, our school committees around our recommendations. And what we're doing is fairly typical, right, in trying to mirror the requirements of the MCAS, what did exist with the MCAS test, through a series of coursework that would mirror the same competence standards. I don't, we don't have developed enough information, because we haven't gone through a graduating class yet, on how that's gone in other districts. But I do know that our initial, our initial thinking on this is very much aligned, particularly with the other larger and the other urban districts in the, in the state.
All right. And I also think, I think the team has, like, sort of carefully phrased this as for the class of 2026, knowing that we want to sort of see what comes out of the Governor's Council before going out in a particular direction and then potentially having to, to deviate that, so.
I don't, I don't particularly have a, like, a question, like, about the, like, the policy itself. But I think, Member Cardet Hernandez, to your question, I think, I mean, it's, it's a larger question about what is, what are the supports that alt-ed schools are particularly receiving that allows for the flexibility to deliver the multitude of courses that you might say would fulfill, like, rigor? I think also what's on the table is that what students, particularly, I think, in all, in our alt-ed communities are voicing is a stronger desire for that, that CTE, right? And so while we do have this, this desire for all our students to go on to perhaps like a, a two-year or a four-year, like, college, ultimately, what we're striving for all students is to have those options, just options, whatever they might be. And I think, I think that's part of, like, the, why I think alt-ed is in that focus of CTE or just, just career options.
Financial freedom.
I mean, fina, financial freedom or just like whatever fits their, their schedule and their circumstances. And, 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 you know, and I think that's why, like, the competency, like, like basis, so it just has to be flexible in that sense.
Yeah, I, those are all great points. I think the, the thing that you hit on, Dr. Alkins, that's really on point with this is that we're, we've actually already leaped into that world in our alternative ed schools with doing some, some of this program that we're calling, you know, Integrated Career Training, which is sort of a, sort of call it like a condensed CTE pathway. And the, part of the issue is, the same issue with credits, that our students in alternative ed settings generally aren't there long enough to complete full pathways as they are designated by the state. We've seen some, some good things and some things that we need to sort of redo in that because of the individual needs of students in our alt-ed setting. So the work that, that Carlos is spearing up with, what we've, we've done with Spring Point and Attuned, a couple of partners, is to identify through, through schools how we can integrate some innovative practices. And we are also in contract around work-based learning to establish that on an individual basis across schools, so we can integrate those practices into what's currently happening, as opposed to trying to come in and say, we're gonna do a full pathway designation, which would upend everything else happening in the school. And so that, that's the uniqueness of this work with alternative ed settings and how small they are and the unique needs of students, is that we're trying to, you know, really meet them at a, at a base skill level, so that we can, we can add to that diploma, right? And, and give students that extra step as they walk out the door.
Yeah. We actually met on this today for a while, and, you know, really, micro-credentialing is really great for the kids in this particular area, because it fits into the chunk of whether they're a year, two years, you know, whatever that be. And they can then get entry level to be able to go in. So I think that's, that's more what we'll probably go with, with some of the alt-ed sites.
That's great.
If I could also just briefly add and just shout out Carlos Diaz's work. When we think about engagement, the alternative ed schools have entered into a partnership with PBL around project-based learning. We've also assigned, in terms of support, through the regional model, a signed and equitable literacy coach that specifically works with alternative ed and the integration of HQIM and PBL. And so we're really excited about what that pilot could bring in terms of alternative ed, but then also what best practices we might then share with our schools outside of alternative ed.
Sorry, when I said work-based learning before, I actually meant project-based learning, so thank you, Leslie, for saying that. Terminally, I'll go over the place, yes.
Any other questions? I just have a curious question to ask. I mean, you did mention it briefly, and I think about this for also adult students who often have been off-track, the whole issue of life experience. How do we incorporate the varied life experience of many of these students who have put in lots of different kind of time? And how do you help them to value and understand what they've experienced and how, what impact that can have on their academic outcomes?
I, I think the first, the, the tie that I would make immediately is to the project-based learning work, is that we have students that have these unique experiences as older students coming into a new school that can capitalize on this type of learning, probably better than your typical 14- or 15-year-old in the first couple of years of high school. How do we codify that sort of thing into credits? That's a, that's probably a longer process, right? But, you know, I, I think the, the fact that we're moving toward curricularly a place that more honors that kind of experience that students have, I think does get us to a much more equitable place with this policy and with what we're doing in general. And I think sort of starts to get back to Member Cardet Hernandez's first question around, how do we make sure that these diplomas are actually representative of, of similar to equal things?
Thank you. If nothing further, we look forward to taking action on this at our June 17th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Our final report this evening is the private school application for the Urban Achievers High School. It's aimed to keep the presentation within 10 minutes, and I'd like to remind our presenters to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters, and I want to invite the superintendent to give introductory remarks.
Certainly, Chair. Thank you. So Pauline Leguero, who I, I know you know, White, she's our Assistant Superintendent of BPS Autonomous Schools. She's gonna explain the process for opening a non-BPS school in Boston, including the role of the district and the required approval of the school committee. Urban Achievers School opened its doors in, is opening its doors in September and will serve high school boys from economically marginalized communities of Boston, including Dorchester, Roxbury, and Mattapan. Urban Achievers School Model integrates academics and athletics and aims to prepare students for college and careers in the sports industry. Some of you may be new to the process. I did this in Somerville, and it was very new to me when I did it. It's been five years since the school committee here approved a new private school. BPS's role in this decision is strictly administrative. The district is responsible for ensuring all private schools seeking approval meet the requirements of Mass General Law, and then making recommendations to me and to the Boston School Committee about that proposal. The district, through Pauline, I've reviewed the proposal as well, found that Urban Achievers has definitely provided sufficient documentation to open in the fall and recommends the approval of this application. I will also say, I think it is really, it is really innovative, and I love that it builds on the work that's happened already with Urban Achievers, with Lino. I think that, you know, there needs to be a menu of schools for young people to choose from. And this particular school, I think, builds on a lot of different success that Urban Achievers has achieved over the years. And I can see where, for the students that have been part of that program and others, this would be such a positive model for them, so. And, you know, I know of Lino's work, and I also know Michelle, and these are in the epiphany. And these are really hard-working, innovative educators who really care a lot about kids. So with that, I'll turn it over to Pauline.
Thank you, Superintendent Skipper. Good evening, school committee members, Chair Robinson. I've had the privilege and opportunity of reinvigorating this private school application process by facilitating the BPS review team. And most recently, we've had the chance to get to know Urban Achievers through this process. And so it's great that we have this opportunity to present this school to you this evening through this application review process. And so our review team has worked really hard to ensure that, as we look through the documents, visit the school, that we're in alignment with Mass General Law, and that is our requirement, that is our job. As some of these slides share, that I'm not gonna spend too much time focusing on, the review team's sole responsibility is to ensure that the private schools seeking approval meet Mass General Law. We are to evaluate the applications from the perspective of the private schools, make recommendations to the superintendent and the Boston School Committee, and so we did our best to do that. The process that we engaged in was really taking the opportunity to take a look at their documents, the formal application. We reviewed for completeness and compliance with regulations. We took an extra step to take a look at some of our BPS policies and share and some of that information with the team, so that they had an opportunity to see how we provide instructional programming to our students here in BPS. We took a visit to the site where we observed the environment, the facility. We interviewed the team members time and time again. We had several conversations. We then were able to really sit down as a team and assess the entire application and have deep conversations that allowed for us to make a recommendation to the superintendent. This, again, is just a brief preview of the steps that we took, we were able to complete. I just want to name specifically that there was a lot of feedback that we were able to give the Urban Achievers team, and they quickly responded to that feedback and diligently sought out support when necessary. And so I definitely want to commend the team for their work in that regard. And without any further, I want to just introduce you all to the head of school, Lino Sanchez, the assistant head of school, Sasha Eskeland, and Patrick, excuse me, Brian Fecky, who is the supporter of their communications and development.
Great. Thank you so much. I'm a, I'm an emotional wreck right now. I have to admit, being here and listening to my former students is really special to me. So I, you know, please bear with me as I try to get through this. So my name is Lino Sanchez, and I'm Urban Achievers founder. Today, we're submitting this application, seeking your approval to launch Urban Achievers, a new tuition-free private high school for boys in Boston that channels their passion for athletics into college, career, and lifelong success. I've lived in Boston my entire life. My mother, a survivor of abuse, held our family together the best she could. We bounced from one housing project to the next, always fighting to stay afloat. I was 17 when I walked out of high school for the last time, not because I didn't care, but because I didn't see a place for me in it. I had grown exhausted of forcing myself to fit into a world that never felt built for me. I was smart, at least I'd like to think so, a serious athlete, but no one ever saw me, at least not all of me. I remember going to my principal, hoping and pleading for help, because I had fallen behind on schoolwork and desperately wanted to fight my way back. Without pause, "Why do you even come to school, Lino? This is a place of learning, not, not for playing games." That moment really broke something in me. Basketball was my sanctuary, my escape, my lifeline. It gave me a reason to wake up, to push through the difficulties of living in poverty and constant chaos. But school personnel never understood that. When the school finally pushed me out, Walpole State Prison took me in. Ironically and thankfully, while in prison, I met someone who saw me, not as a mistake, not as a burden, but as a leader, and refused to let me disappear. He saw a promise where my principal saw failure. That moment became my turning point. It gave me a reason to keep fighting. That moment became my turning point. It gave me a reason to keep fighting. One late night while lying awake in that cold prison cell, I made a quiet promise to myself. If I ever made it out alive, I'd come back for the boys just like me, the ones we underestimate, overlook, and too often lose. Today, that promise I made over 30 years ago is Urban Achievers. It's more than a school. It's a launchpad for young aspiring athletes like myself, full of passion, potential, and promise. We educate and we empower our young boys to walk into every room with purpose. We meet them in their passions and use those passions as a gateway to growth. A young man who dreams of playing in the NBA, we honor that. But we also show him the 20 other careers behind the game. We don't shrink, we don't shrink their dreams, we stretch them. At Urban Achievers, we teach boys how to win in life, how to apply the mindset they build through sport, resilience, leadership, and focus to excel in the classrooms and careers and in their communities. Our boys will graduate not just ready for the next step, but ready to lead wherever they go. And where do we do it? We do it right here, at home, in Roxbury, at the Dewitt Center. The same street where my story almost ended is where theirs will begin. I returned to this neighborhood not with regret, but with purpose. Right in the heart of a community that has seen struggle and strength, we're doing something bold. This isn't about escaping the neighborhood. This is full-circle transformation. It's about showing young men they can grow, lead, and thrive right on the same blocks that shaped them. We believe in neighborhood-based solutions. We're not just creating a school. We're creating an engine of hope, excellence, and visibility from within. How do we do it? Well, we start with what they love, basketball, sports. Then help expand that passion, that fire, well beyond anything they ever imagined. At Urban Achievers, sport and education work in synergy. One builds the body, the other builds the mind. Together, they form something incredibly powerful, creating a path to success that neither could achieve on its own. In partnership with sport industry leaders, in higher education, we create an immersive learning experience that goes beyond textbooks. Our students engage in real-world, practical internships, dual enrollment opportunities, and specialized project-based courses connecting the classrooms directly to sport careers. They will graduate with diplomas, micro certifications, associate's degrees in hand, and doors in the industry wide open. However, making it out isn't the endgame. Our young men learn that true success is reaching back and helping others rise too. I'm not asking the world to believe in these young boys because we already do. And I stand before you as proof of what belief can do for someone. And why do we do this? Because too many of our boys have been told they're not, they're only good for one thing because too many systems are quick to punish but slow to believe. Because I know what happens when a young man is told again and again that he won't amount to anything, that he's not good enough, or that he is a disappointment. And I've lived what it means when someone finally says, "I see you. You're a leader. I believe in you." Urban Achievers exists to give the same belief structure to every child that comes through our doors because when we invest in our boys, and I mean truly invest in our boys, without condition, without wanting anything in return. We won't just change lives. We'll change lineages. We won't just graduate students. We'll send out leaders, fathers, coaches, entrepreneurs, and community builders. When we lift our boys, we lift our neighborhoods. And when we lift our neighborhoods, we lift our city. From the courts, to the classrooms, to careers, to community, this is the journey we walk. That's the future we're building. Urban Achievers isn't a theory. It's readiness. It's bold, it's necessary, and it's overdue. Give us the chance to educate these boys, and we'll give this city generations of young men who know who they are, with their capable love, and ready to lead us forward in a world of chaos and uncertainty. Thank you. Hey. Thank you guys so much. I really appreciate this time.
Thank you. Ready to open it up for questions and comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gracias por compartir su historia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, sir, for sharing your story.
Tuve la oportunidad de conversar con el señor Sanchez antes sobre el proyecto.
I did have the opportunity to talk to Mr. Sanchez regarding the project itself.
De verdad quedé muy sorprendida porque es un proyecto muy inspirador para nuestros jóvenes.
I truly was amazed, was inspired because it's an inspirational project for our youth.
Y lo que pude ver en mi visita es cómo han puesto ustedes un corazón tan hermoso para hacer esto.
What I was able to witness in my visit is that you guys put a beautiful heart to be able to implement and to create this project.
Y que quisiera saber desde qué tiempo ha estado usted luchando para poder hacer este proyecto.
So curiosity comes to my mind. Is it for how long have you been fighting to be able to implement this project?
Thank you for the question. Ever since my release in, on August 31st, um, 1993, I've been fighting to make this thing happen, and I've been committed, um, to all the boys and, and young women of the community. I know one of the questions that I normally get when I say I'm starting an all-boys school is, you know, "Well, what about the young girls?" In fact, the girls that I work with now come to me and say, "Well, what about us?", right? And I tell them, um, "Look, you know, we still have the after-school program. We still have some weekend program, and, and we're going to use the young boys as, uh, as guinea pigs. You know what I mean? We're going to poke and prod and figure this out. And, uh, hopefully, within three or four years, we'll be able to start a sister school for you girls." So, um, they're going to get what's better. They're going to get the best, is what I tell them. So they sort of leave me alone after that.
Thank you. Es un proyecto muy peculiar, muy particular porque es privado, va a ser una escuela privada. Sin embargo, no va a haber cobro por la matrícula. Entonces...
So you have to say it's a very particular project. It is a very interesting project because at the same time, we're saying it is private. However, there is no charge for tuition itself.
Yes.
Y en ese sentido, perdón, mi pregunta es, por la sostenibilidad del, del proyecto, ¿verdad?, de la escuela, ¿cómo van la parte económica que tanto nos la hace a todos? ¿Cómo vamos a, a garantizar que nuestros estudiantes van a tener esa sostenibilidad en, en la escuela?
So finances are, are important. It is an important aspect in, in everything we do for all of us. In terms of sustainability, how is it that you are going to be able to sustain that project without the important aspect of the financials? So the students can try, thrive in their environment, sustainability without financial, the ability to have any financial services?
Yeah. Um, so thank you for that question as well. Um, and it's a very important one because we know we are a private institution and, and, you know, we're raising all the funding. I think the beautiful aspect about what we are doing and what we have is, is longevity. You know, the people that are around us and the people that have, um, funded us up until this point, it's not people that, at least not the majority of them, are people that are just coming out of the woodwork. They're people that have been involved with this since, since its inception. Um, and they continue to be involved. And as you heard earlier from one of our, from one of our funders, she's been around for 15 years, you know, and she sees the impacts that we're creating, and she's continuing along with quite a few other folk continuing to support us. And this is all as we, you know, I, I, we didn't mention it earlier, but, you know, I think we did, no, someone did. Um, we have, uh, up until this point, we've raised, oh, my wife, $3 million in cash and pledges. And that's before even hitting the ground running. You know, so I know that we have a plan, a long-term plan in place, and, um, Brian can speak more toward that. But the biggest thing here is that we've built amazing relationships with people, um, that have high capacity, and they continue to support us. But if you want more than that, um, you know, Brian can definitely speak to that effect as well.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this opportunity to be able to, to present our application for Urban Achievers. As Lino mentioned, uh, what's exciting for us is that we've, we have cash and pledges over the next three years of over $3 million. This is before formal approval from, from the committee to be able to launch. And so we're super excited about the opportunities that we have now, but also going forward. Uh, this, at the end of this fiscal year, we anticipate a $469,000 surplus going into next fiscal year, which starts for us on July 1. Uh, in, in next year, we have pledges of 901,183. So in year one, we, we have cash and pledges already in place for $1,370,183. Our budget for next year is $1,113,972. So we are fully funded in year one and anticipate a surplus going in beyond year one into FY '27. In FY '27, we have $815,683 in pledges, as well as pledges in FY '28 for $815,683. Within those pledges, we have a $1 million pledge and a $1.2 million pledge. Uh, we have the CEO, Moderna, who's, who's proposed to provide $300,000 per year over four years. Uh, we have the founder of Onyx Partners pledged $1 million over three years. Uh, just between those two donors, that's over 40% of our operational expenses. And so we, we, we're very optimistic about the type of support from those major donors. But also on top of just those donors, the other, other, other pledges as well. So people are really buying into Lino's leadership and the relationships that he has within the basketball community and the, and, and the business community that we're, we're prepared to be able to continue to launch the, off the, off of these relationships. And then our model allows, as, as sports industry, we're going to have lots of corporate partners, whether they're in our classroom presenting academics, opportunities to, internships for our students, sponsorships, gala, uh, involved with our gala, as well as individual donors. And so we know that we have an opportunity because of our model of bringing in a lot of corporate partners, and we, and we could see that being long-term funding as well, just as the model of, of our school. And so we're, but the biggest thing is the relationships we have in place are really strong with some major capacity. And so that's where we are right now with our, with our funding.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment on member Pankos Garcia's question. We actually don't, as part of the authorization, the school doesn't need to show four years of funding. It just needs to be able to show the pathway by which the first year would happen, uh, and, and then like what would be the plan going forward. I think in the past, on school committee, they've asked for two years, which, when we looked at what they have, they have two years, in my opinion. I think to, I think, I think to the point that they also, while this is a new school, it is not a new concept or community. And so they're building it. And so I think, um, you know, much like Epiphany, I think, you know, it's in that same spirit that you're taking the burden off of parents and, and removing barriers to be able to give that access to kids. So, um, I think because of that demonstrated success, Epiphany's model, I would hold very high hopes that these guys will be able to pull that off.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I just want to say thank you for the presentation. Good luck. I have a sneaking suspicion this is going to be a great success for kids. You know, I'm the son of two parents who were incarcerated and a sibling who was incarcerated, and you would have been a gift in my community. And so I hope this is a real success here and maybe gets to grow elsewhere too. So thank you so much for your service.
No, thank you.
Well, as a matter of fact, I, first of all, uh, thank you. Let me tell you this, from your personal story. Not only that, I empathize with you, would I share your experience. You were incarcerated in a certain confined of, you know, of a structure. I was incarcerated in the confined of a country. But, uh, the, the hardship that, that went through my, uh, young life, you know, my teenage years is very much akin to the kind of hardship that you went through. So I applaud, I applaud you for standing up. And, uh, and I applaud you for bringing your experience, your commitment, and your love to the community. And, um, let's be friends. I really, really appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
I mean, my question is more around like the curiosity of, obviously, we're a sports town. So, uh, obviously, um, asking around the, the partnerships with our local sports rehab facilities and our sports teams. As a matter of fact, like what are some of those in the works right now, if any?
Yeah, no, thank you for that. Um, no, currently, we're, you know, partnered with Mass General Brigham. You know, the Sports Medicine Department is, is huge, you know, and that's one of the, you know, areas that we've been trying to really focus on. And particularly, you know, with sports psychology, right? You know, when you think about athletes, um, you know, once that, you know, that, that, that last shot goes up and the lights go out, you know, a lot of us don't know how to adjust. We don't know how to transition from being athletes. So the sports psychology piece is a major piece that we're really focusing on with them. You know, and then there's everything else under the sun at Sports Medicine. You know, that's one of the things that we're focusing on is to let our kids understand that, you know, you have athletic training, you have physical therapy. I mean, it's just huge. But our kids don't get that in the community, right? You know, we're given, we're given the basketball, and we're given the football, and we're told, "Get us out of the projects", you know, and, and we're, and that burden is placed upon us when we're just little kids, and, and we try to stick to that. But, um, going back to your question, you know, Mass General is one of those, uh, places. We have a relationship with, um, um, the Patriots as well. Um, you know, we, really close, close personal friend of mine is, um, we're trying to get into where the Celtics are, and actually, um, you know, one of, I guess, I can, one of our funders is, uh, part of the new team, um, of owners over there. So that's going to be an easy, seamless transition for us as we start to think about going down that path as well. Uh, there's just so many opportunities here for us as an athletic school, um, as a sports school that, you know, once we get, you know, an approval is, is, I think, one of the reasons we've been holding back from a lot of stuff is because we didn't know exactly where we're going to end up. But once that's, once this does happen, we're on the move. So, just so you know. Thank, thank you for that question.
So thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your commitment to the youth of our city. And for sharing your story. I was watching you earlier tonight while others were testifying, and I could see the impact to you. It was hard for you to listen to people sing the praises of what you have done for them. And you started off tonight with us by saying you're a little bit of emotional basket case, and thank you for sharing that. So I just have one minor question, and, and I missed it in the application, so I apologize for that. But the size, what, tell me, tell me class sizes that you're shooting for.
Sure. Well, actually, you know, as, um, sorry, uh, Superintendent Skipper, you mentioned, um, you know, I, I've been at Epiphany now for 20-plus years, and, um, it's the same model, you know, it's, uh, we, we're going to start off with 20 youngsters, um, and we're going to grow by 20 every year. I love the, the idea of, of starting small. When I think about the time that I've been at Epiphany, I think I know every single child that's come through those doors, right? You build those rapport with these... You build those rapport with these young people, and that's exactly, you know, that goes a long way, you know? And you get the kids to be able to do, you know, what they need to do because you've built that rapport with them. So that's what it is for us, we're gonna start in the same fashion. That model speaks to my heart, and that's the way we want to continue to move, so twenty each year.
Where do, how do you envision, I'm sure you're gonna have more than twenty young men interested in the first year. So is it a lottery? Is it an application? Is it?
It's a typical private school. Yeah, so we have an application process. We visit, well, you know, like Epiphany, we go visit parents and families at their homes. They come in, just like Boston Arts Academy, where they have to come in and play instruments, you know, they come here, and we actually put them through a lot of athletic training to see where they are. So it's a process, you know, they have to, the application process entails, you know, written essays, and we want to know from an assessment standpoint where they stand because we want to make sure that they get all the supports that they need when they come. So it's pretty extensive, and the biggest problem I think we're going to have is, I think you're getting to it, right, is we're not gonna have enough room for all these kids that are gonna wanna come. And that to me is, hurts to think about, right? Because we want to be able to serve as many kids as we can, and we want to open the doors to as many of them as we can, but we already know it's gonna be tough to do so. So something down the line to think about, growth.
Part of me doesn't like losing great student athletes in Boston Public Schools as well. But as the superintendent said, our young people need a variety of choices, the same reason we have a number of alternative ed schools as well. And you've been running an amazing program, and this is about ensuring our young people have different opportunities and choices that speak to them.
Sure.
Right? And you are enormously focused on that. Sound like the superintendent wanted to say something there.
I was just gonna say that I think, and this is just my feeling about it, but I, whether students attend a private school or a charter, or a BPS school, we're one city. And at day's end, it is just more important that young people find the place that they will be seen and can be developed. And so I think, you know, you guys will stay very committed to that, and I will have no, no question that the students, be it eighty, a hundred, however many it is of the young men. I think there might be some surrounding schools that are private, all-boys, that might have some concern. But that's not my problem, so.
But thank you for your commitment and what you're doing.
No, thank you guys very much, I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, just very excited to see you all again. We did have conversations earlier this year, and after that conversation left, very excited about the possibility, particularly, I'm a parent of a now almost fifty-year-old boy who would have loved to have had that kind of experience. And we've often discussed it about the issue of why, you know, he was, also did arts, but why could there be an art school for kids who liked arts and could be arts and academics, but there really wasn't a sports and academic middle-high school kind of experience? And now even hearing that, some colleges are doing more with their athletes, if not it being an extracurricular, but it being the focus and building program around it to see this happening for young people, I think it's very exciting. What grade level are you starting at?
We're starting with the ninth grade.
Ninth grade?
Correct.
So there're gonna be a whole lot of fourth, fifth, and sixth graders out there. Can't forget the bit.
Already know.
Middle school, energy, but thank you so much.
Thank you so much, really appreciate you.
I'd be remiss if I didn't say this just from the seat that I stand, that I sit in right now. I think what's probably the most paramount about this application is the partnerships. I applaud the partnerships, what I'm just, as a, I'm encouraging strong communication with those partners around the longevity of their commitment, particularly because within your application, you have talked very poignantly about the educational inequity that falls along racial lines specifically. And I think nobody in this room is stranger to the fact that our government right now is engaging in all-out war on this. And so as I've seen at academic institutions, as I've seen at corporate institutions, as I've seen at nonprofit institutions, who have kind of moved away from commitments to this. I strongly suggest, like, having those sit-down conversations with your partners as you continue, and really talk to them about, like, I wanna know that y'all are all in on this.
Sure.
And this is a commitment, right? And I know, like, there are a lot of people that are buckling right now, and so with such a, I think, a great plan for a school, you know, and the students that would be invested in it, that's just something that just crosses my mind about making sure that those partnerships are longstanding and hopefully permanent.
For sure. No, I appreciate that, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Great night, everyone.
Thank you, and we look forward to talking to you.
Thank you.
Say that nice move on, so, thank you. So there, I've heard there is no public comment, so anyway, any new business? All right, so that concludes our business for this evening. Please note, the next school committee meeting will take place in person on Tuesday, June seventeenth at six PM here at the Bowling Building. And prior to that meeting, the committee will host an in-person retreat on Wednesday, May twenty-eighth at the Bowling Building. This will be a continuation of the work we started in the fall, and the retreat will not be broadcasted, but it will be open to the public. And if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second? Any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and have a good night.